Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool, and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747, or gogreenharbor.com. People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
Good evening, folks. We're going to get started with our February 24th Board of Selectmen meeting. Thank you for joining us. If you would please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start with a proclamation that we have for an upcoming event. This is something that we have been commemorating here in town, and really just wonderful event. White Ribbon Day campaign, concerned with really domestic violence, violence against women. This is a couple of years in now, I think, right? So let me just read the proclamation for the upcoming event. Whereas our community, Falmouth, Massachusetts, is deeply concerned about the public health and public safety issues of violence against women and all gender-based violence, including sexual assault, rape, domestic violence, stalking, sexual harassment, and human trafficking. And whereas the many cultures represented in our community are all affected, including heterosexual, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals, communities of color, immigrants, the youth, the aged, the infirm, and the differently abled. And whereas the White Ribbon Day campaign believes that the majority of men wish to make a positive contribution towards ending this violence, and that by reimagining manhood we can break down the rigid gender roles and power dynamics that contribute to and foster gender-based violence. And whereas our municipality, along with other municipalities across the Commonwealth, is committed to taking tangible steps to raise awareness, to support survivors, to hold offenders accountable, and to promote safety, equity, and nonviolence in our community. And whereas our municipality recognizes the important lifesaving work of Independence House Incorporated, Falmouth Human Services, located within our community, and whereas the White Ribbon Day pledge states, "From this day forward, I promise to be a part of the solution in ending violence against women and all gender-based violence. Therefore, it be resolved that March 12th, 2020, is proclaimed White Ribbon Day in Falmouth; that all the members of the Falmouth Board of Selectmen and all municipal employees are encouraged to wear the white ribbon during the week of White Ribbon Day; that the White Ribbon Day pledge provided by the White Ribbon Campaign be displayed at the municipal offices in such a location that can be seen and may be signed by elected officials, employees, and visitors alike. The white ribbons will be made available by the White Ribbon Campaign representatives to visitors to the municipal offices during the week of White Ribbon Day. In witness whereof, we have hereon to set our hand and cause the great seal of the town of Falmouth to be affixed."
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, and I really encourage folks to... There was an event... Is anyone here for this proclamation? Oh, come on up. Is the event at the Herman Room this year?
Yes, March 12th, 9:00 a.m.
Just introduce yourself for those who don't know you.
Sorry. My name is Richard Doobie. I live here in Falmouth. The event is March 12th, 9:00 a.m. Herman Room in the library. There will be three guest speakers. Reverend Mabane will be one, and Dr. David Tager, who's head of community health, will be there speaking, and I will be the third speaking. Just brief history, started in 1991 in Canada when 14 young women were killed by a man who had nothing against them other than the fact that they were women. The original campaign was started by men. It has drifted down to the United States, but it is mainly organized and run by women. This is not a women's issue. This is a human issue, and the perpetrators are mainly males, overwhelmingly males. So we're looking to get men involved in this. As such, I'm an ambassador for them. We have other ambassadors. The March 12th event will be seeking more. So the gentleman sitting here before us, we'd certainly like your participation. As I said, this is not a women's problem. This is mainly a male problem, and we have to be part of the solution and not the instigators of the problem.
Great, thank you so much, Rich, and really great event last year, just kind of bringing it back to our community and talking about what takes place here and the services available. And it sounds like the speakers will kind of be, you know, folks from our community again. So really wonderful event. Hopefully you can attend at March 12th, 9 o'clock at the Herman Room. Thank you. And will... Someone will bring this to present it that day. One of us will be there to present it. Thank you. Okay, recognition, Mr. Ron?
I just want to say I attended the funeral today of Chase Sores, and he was just such a nice young man. He played varsity basketball in Falmouth, and he went on to play in college. And he went on to also become a volunteer in coaching kids even at his young age of only 23. Tragically passed in a car accident last week and a half ago, I guess. And the family is, of course, very devastated, and they have another son who's still in the hospital with serious injuries and hope he pulls through. So my prayers are certainly with that family and just such a nice group of people and a great bunch of kids. It was really a sad day today.
And a lot of those kids have had just a lot of loss in the last few years in the folks in their age groups, so...
Very true.
Really tough, but thank you. Any announcements from the board? Anyone here who has any announcement about any events? All right, public comment. This is a period for folks to speak up to two minutes individually about an issue that's not on our agenda tonight. Please just remember, because it's not on our agenda, we can't respond back to you. So we're happy to hear your questions, but we can't engage in a dialogue back and forth. Mark, come on up.
Mark Finer in 98 Grand Ave. I've been up here a few times about this. Four or five years ago, I brought it up. The streets in Falmouth Heights coming from the ocean on Worcester Court, the stop signs are run often. And I asked if they could put pairs of stop signs at Jericho Path and Grand Ave North, which they did, and they worked tremendously well because the person has at least twice as likely to see the stop sign. The last few weeks, I've been doing some work out in the yard, and yesterday I was working out in the yard, and within 15 or 20 minutes, two vehicles came up from the beach up Worcester Court and through what used to be called Grand Ave North in the neighborhood of 45 to 50 miles an hour. The one-stop sign that is there has to be 20 years old, and it faces due south and southwest. The red is burnt right out of it. I'd just like to request again if they could put a pair of stop signs both ways. Worcester Court coming down to Grand Ave North isn't as bad, but it's terrible. Somebody's going to lose their life there. I mean, because if you get hit in the door by somebody going 50 miles an hour, it's not going to be pretty. Thanks.
Thanks, Mark. Anyone else for public comment?
My name's Amy Sellers, and I live at 16 Old Dock Road, West Falmouth. I'm still trying to understand why we have to close West Falmouth Fire Station under Chief Small's plan. So imagine my great surprise when I open Friday, February 21st, Enterprise, and the headline reads that West Falmouth Fire Station will stay open. I was elated. However, when you read the fine print, you see it's going to be open only if our firefighters volunteer to staff it on an overtime basis.
I'm just going to stop you because I do believe this is on our agenda.
All right.
So I just... It can't be in public comment.
That's fine.
So it's on our agenda, we're going to talk about that. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay. All right, so under administrative orders, we have vote to approve application for the assistance to firefighters grant. Mr. Suso?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Chief Small has some information he can present. I believe he has a PowerPoint as well for the board.
I've got a couple of... A couple of these tie to YouTube videos. One of them's got a little volume, but I don't know if I can make the... If I turn the volume up here, Peter, will it play the volume?
I believe so.
So I'm here tonight to ask for permission to apply for an assistance to firefighters' grant. AFG is a federal program that's been around for about 15 years, if not longer. Falmouth has participated in this program twice. Once, then Deputy Chief Sullivan applied for a grant. We were able to purchase our fire rescue boat with that money. I think that was about $250,000. When I was a deputy, I wrote a grant for, I believe, about $350,000 for improvements to our self-contained breathing apparatus and improvements to our protective gear. It's a one time... It happens every year. It's a... Federal government provides 90% of the funding, and the town is responsible for 10%. So what I'm looking for this year, there's actually two items. Two of our oldest ambulances... We have two brand-new ambulances about to be delivered, hopefully within 60 days. The two older ambulances are not equipped with auto-loading stretchers. So it's possible to retrofit the ambulances with auto-loading stretchers. And the other... So I'm looking for two of those, money to retrofit two of the ambulances, and also our air compressor that we use to fill our SCBA with has kind of blown up and is done. So if I can just... This is just to give a quick demonstration of what... This is what our... The two older ambulances that we have in the fleet, this is... I'm going to just kind of scroll through this to show you how... To show you how these... To get an idea of how the patient loads. I don't know if you can hear the volume, but I can kind of narrate it. I don't think that...
So this is what we have in the two older ones?
Two older ambulances, right. It's a... Right, you have to do it manually. Obviously, it's, you know, this is associated with a lot of back injuries. It's associated with the occasional dropped patient. And I'll show you when I get to what we're looking to retrofit to. The modern auto-loading system is much more robust as far as collision resistance and so forth. So this is what these two current ambulances, the two current ambulances that we have, this is how the patient loads.
Chief, can you make that a widescreen?
Probably.
On the right-hand corner of that frame?
Bottom right, right there?
Bottom right of the... No, of the actual... Of view... There you see that? That's it. Hit that.
I think that's as big as it gets.
Oh, okay.
So that's the current system, the power-load system that we'd like to retrofit the ambulances to. This is just a demonstration of what the power-load system is. Our newest ambulance at headquarters is equipped with this. In Massachusetts, after last year, any ambulance that gets purchased has to have this system. But our two older ambulances were purchased before. This was kind of a thing. They are fully retrofittable. And so this is... This is the wave of the future. And it's got a little volume to it, and it does talk about, you know, back injury prevention, about less propensity to... Unfortunately, sometimes patients get dropped. It's a 700-pound system. Significantly safer for the members, significantly safer for the patients. And like I said, the current ambulance at headquarters has this, the other ones will. This will just get the whole fleet up to having the same stretcher-loading system.
And then I see you gave us a cost breakdown?
Yeah, that's a draft, though. I've got an updated one of those on here.
Okay.
So that's what the power-load system looks like. This is just our... Our current air compressor at headquarters was purchased in 1995. Air compressors, I'm not really sure they have an industry shelf life, but they generally give you an idea that they're about to give up the ghost, and this one just kind of gave up the ghost. And Lieutenant O'Malley, who was doing the preparation work for the auto-loading stretchers, attended a seminar that the people, that the AFG people put on every year, assistance to firefighters grant, has a sort of a thing that they give priorities to. This year, they had mentioned that breathing air systems were one of their priorities. So this is something that if we're not successful on a grant, I'm going to have to replace in the... Out of the budget anyway. So the cost breaks down like this. It's for $150,000, $75,000 times two for the auto-loading stretchers, $98,000 for the compressor. You can see where the match is. The $24,800 would be the town's responsibility. I have a line item in my budget for equipment and gear that I could just... I could cover this out of my operating budget, wouldn't need to go to town hall, town meeting.
You just need the permission from the board.
Just need the permission from the board, that's all.
We are all in the wrong business because that is just...
Wow, yeah, it's crazy.
Amazing.
That compressor.
It's crazy, yeah.
But this is breathable.
It's breathing air, right. And both of these costs have got service agreements. Our compressor system now, in order to be OSHA-compliant, every time you fill a bottle, it has to be logged. That could be done by a computer now with barcodes. The manufacturer can monitor the system remotely. And also, to be OSHA-compliant, we need to have quarterly air sampling and testing done. That's all built in, that's fairly new. But yeah, that was... That number kind of floored me, too.
Is that our only compressor for filling these air tanks?
Yes. We only have one at headquarters.
Okay. Should we have two? What do you do right now when you don't have...
Right now, we go to Mashpee. We have a deal, we just take it to Mashpee when we have to fill them. We could. We've got along with one pretty well so far.
Okay.
So, but like I said, right now, it gave it up. You see that it was broken. So I just need your permission to do so.
And I would just... Oh, go ahead.
Just one question. And so you have money in your operating budget for this capital expense. Is that something we need to... Generally, capital comes in a different budget. Is that something that we're still okay with having it go through this kind of meeting?
We feel we're okay with the size of the fire budget. We can handle it.
And then the only other thing I would say is, generally, we've had FinCom just take a look at these to make sure it's not like the free puppy where, you know, there's software that suddenly is, you know, $12,000 a year for updating. So I would just... I mean, whatever this is.
Been transmitted to FinCom.
Okay.
They've not had the opportunity to...
See the presentation.
To weigh in and see the entire proposal. They do have a copy of the early PowerPoint, however.
There is a window. I think it's March 13th is the last day we have to apply.
Okay.
I would move to vote approval with a concurrence of the finance committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being on top of that. All right, now we have approved grant for revocable license to Thomas L. Messer and Maricia F. Messer and Joanna Bennett to maintain a retaining wall at 190 Galette Drive, East Falmouth. Is anyone here for this? Aye, welcome. Do you just want to introduce yourself?
Maricia Messer.
Sorry, I didn't...
That's okay. I'm used to it. At 190 Galette Drive. And our attorney was unavoidably... He's absent tonight, so if you can guide us a little bit about what you need from us, we have a retaining wall.
Yeah.
Oh, you're here for Kevin?
Yeah.
I take it back.
Sneaky lawyers.
Yeah, right. Is there any other kind? Yeah, right.
How are you? Welcome.
I'm well. Thank you. For the record, I'm Matt Terry from Amen &amp; Clower, a law firm here in Falmouth, pinch hitting for Kevin, who's being a good Boy Scout by being at the Boy Scouts. So I'm appearing before you this evening to ask for the town to grant a revocable license to our clients to maintain four square feet of a retaining wall. That is, when it was constructed, was inadvertently extended into the private way known as Galette Drive. I will note that by extending, I mean into the absolute legal limit of the road. It is... The four-foot encumbrance is 16 feet behind the actual line of the pavement, and it's 13 feet behind a utility pole that the town just authorized the installation of with respect to utility service to this property. So it's an encumbrance, really in name only, on the ground physically. It appears well behind what would be the improved area, including the driveway and surrounding landscaping, that is the access point for the property to Galette Drive.
I didn't get a chance to drive by. That's my old neighborhood on Caravelle Drive. Is this the house when you come through the four-way stop that has that retaining wall that's along there, or no? It's further?
We're all the way down to the end of the...
Okay.
And this retaining wall was constructed within the last year or so to mitigate runoff from installation of a septic system. And there's been some prior conversation with the town around the retaining wall. An engineer assessed its quality is good, and... But what we're looking for is an ongoing basis to have a license that's been presented to the town and reviewed by town council to maintain the small portion of the retaining wall that technically encroaches into town land. And the license is revocable by the town at any point for any reason, similar to lots of different license arrangements that we've done when we've had encroachments, or we've had folks who need to use town land to access fences and walls that directly meet the property line and then abut public property.
Any questions from the board?
Any negative comments from engineering or any department?
I don't... We didn't get... Not that I saw, so I don't believe so.
The town engineer's here, Jim McGlaughlin.
We received four comments from Mr. McGlaughlin dated January 22nd. We addressed all of them in the revised plan that's been submitted to the town, revised as of January 28th. So the four comments were that the owner of the property be identified on the exhibit, that Galette Drive be labeled as public, the existing telephone pedestal be shown on the exhibit, and existing monumentation be shown. So all four of those comments have been incorporated in the most recent plan, which will be attached to the license agreement that's recorded at the registry if it's approved.
Did you want to... Come on up and... I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to add.
James McGlaughlin, town engineer. I did review the revised plan and recommended approval.
Yeah, go ahead.
Jim, before you go, I just wanted to ask whether there's any perceived sideline blockage by this wall that might turn out to be a liability on the town if we provide this?
No, I don't think so. It's at the end of a cul-de-sac, and as you go around the island, it's off to the side. And as was mentioned, it's behind a telephone pole and a telephone pedestal, you know, one of those small pedestals, so...
Thank you.
And it's very low to the ground.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I would move approval or to... I would approve... Move that we approve the grant of the revocable license.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have approved grant of license, temporary seasonal canvas vestibule, Water Street Kitchen, fifty-six Water Street Woods Hole. Is anyone here for the applicant? Let me just pass this one over.
I just had one question on that one.
Yes.
I guess what I saw in our packet was it was for the Fishmongers Cafe.
Correct. I think.
It's changed.
Yes.
The name is changed.
Changed. Didn't change at all.
So we, the new license will be under, is there something I read that actually was granting it to the Fishmongers Cafe? It wasn't just the map.
No, it's the actual grant says Fishmongers, still says Fishmongers. You're right.
Right.
Yeah.
So are we also approving, not to recede?
I think we've already approved that.
Yeah, that's, that's said with somebody earlier. Yeah.
And is this for summer or winter?
I don't see the season in here, but I've never seen anybody in the winter, right? I mean, I don't think it's limited, but I don't see, there's no, no language about the season.
Okay, well, I was just concerned about the remaining width of sidewalk, but if the seating's already approved, then I guess that's not really.
Well, the license does talk about a seasonal canvas vestibule.
Right, it just doesn't say what season, but I think, you know, given the, given where it's gonna be, given the nature of business in Woods Hole in the winter, I don't think that they probably need that much space, but.
We expected to have a representative who's not in attendance, so.
So I guess I would just, I mean, I think it would be nice, it would be nice to carry it just so we can ask those questions.
Should we ta-table it for a while? Maybe they'll show up?
Yeah, we can just hold it for now and if no one shows up, we can table it.
We certainly can't sign this license for them anyway because.
It's not correct. This draft is, right, this draft is not correct, so. Okay, great. We have vote to designate members of the Citizens Advisory Committee for Future Fire Station as special municipal employees for the purpose of the conflict of interest law. Mr. Sussa?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Um, you've taken this standard procedure in the past for newly appointed committees and, uh, town council suggested this be done for the, uh, Citizens Advisory Committee, uh, by a vote of the board. If you so vote, those nine members will be so designated.
Do we have to name them individually or can we just name the committee as being?
My understanding is you just name the members of the committee and that will automatically cover it.
All right, I move that we designate the members of the Citizens Advisory Committee for Future Fire Station as special municipal employees.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Um, now we have a vote to transmit a letter of concern to the state regarding the Trunk River Bike Way. This is something that Doug Brown, has really been kind of thankfully reminding us about and, um, you know, we had the damage to the area after the storm and we have plans that are approved to reinforce the revetment there, but, um, the state is requiring, and I know we'll get more detail, but just requiring some smaller stones that really don't seem to be appropriate. So the idea is to send at least a letter of concern to note that, you know, really our own engineering, our own DPW, um, doesn't feel that, that our own CONCOM actually doesn't feel that this is necessarily the best way to address it, so.
In our, in our own experience.
In our own experience, yes, of many storms, so.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, James McGlaughlin, town engineer. I have some photographs from, uh, the, uh, storm last October that I thought I could just hand out and they're in the presentation, but in the interest of time, I thought, uh, I'd just hand these out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the area, uh, in question is, um, the bike way. Uh, this is the, where the bike way crosses, um, Surf Drive and continues down, crosses over Trunk River. And then, uh, this area here adjacent to the parking lot and further down, uh, towards Woods Hole is the area that's been subject to the, uh, a number of, number of, uh, storm damage, uh, events. And these photographs are from, uh, this past October. Uh, the, just in terms of orientation to the, the next couple of slides and I'll try to be brief. The, the pond here is, is, uh, a good point of reference for the, the next couple of aerials. Um, in this area here, by regulation, by DEP regulation, it's defined as a barrier beach, coastal dune and, uh, uh, coastal, uh, um, bar, um, barrier beach, coastal dune and coastal bank. Uh, all of those really prohibit construction of a, uh, revetment under their, under their regulations. And I know obviously there's a bike path over it and there used to be a railroad over it, but it still is classified under those definitions in the, the DEP regulations under the Wetland Protection Act. So, um, and, and those regulations don't allow, uh, a new revetment, only, uh, construction of a, uh, a reconstruction repair of an existing one. So back in, uh, two thousand fourteen or fifteen, uh, this is an aerial photograph. And again, this is the location of the pond. Here's the bike path. Um, you can see where the, there's an existing revetment here. And then along this area here, there's, uh, evidence of large stone, revetment stone. And that's what was the basis for extending the revetment down to the end here, which is basically, uh, at, at the endpoint of the pond. So based on, on this evidence, uh, we're allowed and permitted to, to build, uh, rebuild that section of the revetment. And this is the, the plan that was approved back in two thousand fifteen. You can see this is the sort of random designation of the existing stones that were out there. This is the end of the existing revetment and this is the proposed new revetment that we did construct, uh, a couple of years ago. And, um, subsequent to that, and this is a photo, an aerial, uh, from two thousand eighteen. You can see this is the old revetment section and this, uh, new more uniform section is the, the one that we just built. Uh, and then beyond that, uh, this area here is, is, uh, doesn't have any evidence of stone. And because of that DEP, um, under the regulations, doesn't allow us to rebuild that as, as a revetment, only as a, uh, beach nourishment, uh, type project. So the, the plan that, uh, we have approved with Conservation Commission is a, uh, a cobble core in this area here, which is, runs along this section here. This is the end of the, uh, revetment that was built a couple of years ago. And going down towards Woods Hole, uh, we have, uh, a, a proposed cross section where, um, the existing bike path is here. Uh, we go up at a three to one slope, uh, for about two feet in elevation and then over eight feet and then down at three, three and a half to one down to, uh, mean high water. And this is a cobble, uh, uh, filled, uh, slope. And that's what, uh, is, uh, approved under their, their regulations. Uh, the concern, of course, is that, uh, it will, uh, continue to, to erode and, uh, we'll have to go back and, and do it on a more frequent basis than we do with the, uh, repairs to the revetment. Uh, and I'll, I'll only note that the, the revetment, uh, is not, uh, maintenance free. You can see from some of those photographs where behind the revetment, the, uh, bike path is all wavy and eroded. And on the other side, on the parking lot side of the, uh, area where there is a revetment, we have considerable, uh, erosion on that side of the bike path. Uh, down in some of those photographs, the, the drop off from the path down to where the eroded section is in the, uh, parking lot is, is one to two feet. And similarly, at the end of the revetment where there is no, uh, no, uh, armored protection, that section of the bike path, uh, sunk also about two feet. And that's the, the last photograph in the, in the packet there. So, um, ne- neither the, the solutions are, uh, you know, complete solution when, when it comes to keeping up with, uh, storms from the ocean, but, uh, the thought is that, um, if this, um, this section with the, uh, the cobble revetment, uh, proves unsuccessful, that, uh, the next, uh, repair that we'd, uh, like to, to get approved with DEP would be for additional armored stone.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Do you have any sense of the rationale behind the DEP staff as to why they would turn us down on what we've proposed?
Well, um, just that it's not, it's not allowed by the regulation. That, I mean, it's that really cut and dried and from their, from their perspective and, you know, when you start to look at, um, thi- this section of the, behind the revetment, obviously it didn't, uh, the, the damage didn't occur here, but on the other side, uh, even with the revetment, you know, there's considerable erosion. So, the e- either solution is not a, not a panacea.
But it's still better than the section that, I mean, that you, I mean, the DPW was amazing and got out there and smoothed that out relatively quickly. The other section was really, you know, much more damaged.
Right, well, I think y- just based on the, uh, the wave action, what, what it seems to be, uh, at least this is my hypothesis, is you, you don't see a lot of cobble on, on the bike path here adjacent to the parking lot. And all the cobble that did wash over is in the parking lot. Um, and then when you go a little bit further, uh, oh, wrong way. Uh, start looking down towards Woods Hole from the end of the parking lot, you see all the cobble just ended up right on the bike path behind the revetment. And then when you go a little bit further, um, down to the end, oops.
Yeah.
Uh, where there is no, this is the end of the, the existing revetment. Uh, you can see, um, not only the cobble all end up over in the wetland area over here. There's none on the path itself, but, uh, it did cause that erosion there. That, that's about a two-foot drop.
So is there anything we can do with DEP's regulations? I mean, do they have waivers to the regulations or is it just?
Well, I think in this case, it would be a, a variance to the regulation. And, uh, those typically granted on very rare occasions. Uh, I think, um, in, in this case, we've already gone on record explaining what the issue is. They've responded back and saying, uh, uh, basically, they want, want to see us try and comply with the regulation as it currently is. And, uh, if this continues to, to be a, a failing situation, they consider, uh, additional, uh, armoring.
And that's really the point of the letter is to be on record noting that we don't agree.
Correct.
And that our own experience shows us that it's not a, an appropriate remedy.
We're gonna do what's been, what we've been told, but it's not gonna work.
Just like we did last time. I believe that was the same situation before, right? They said try the cobble first?
Well, um, in, in the, the prior section, uh, we had a, a little bit of a leeway with the, a little wiggle room with
Because of the old stone that was there.
This existing stone out there that we can make the case that it was reconstruction of the, of a, a damaged revetment. And that was based on the, the evidence that was in these aerials with the, the armored stone. Not much of it, but there was some, some there. Whereas down below here, there's no evidence of that at this point in time.
Now, if we took a picture of it today, all that green in that picture right there is now washed away.
Correct.
Because the, what we're using just isn't working.
You know, but such an important resource for our town, the bike path is one of the main things that brings people here and it's one of our best features. And I just feel like it's such an important resource, even if we're not gonna get any action from it, I'd like to go with the letter. Just, and I'd like to send it to the governor and say, hey, are you, are you aware that you're, what your, uh, regulator, regulatory authority is doing? And, you know, he tells us to be resilient and try to think of ways you can bounce back after a storm. And if you look at the two different sections, I mean, they're not completely different, but I think there's a pretty big difference between the revetment se- section and the unprotected one.
We have two additional photos that show it a little more dramatically.
Yeah.
You can view those up there. What Jim had has been excellent and much more comprehensive. Uh, but a couple snaps is, I was out there the day after, uh.
It was so obvious, you were out there.
Yeah. And, uh, the, these will show the, uh,
Right.
The revetment section, um, you see there's no damage in one spot or very little and beyond it is catastrophic. So if you go back to that first one. Yeah, um, where the revetment ends, there's, you know, there's some damage and erosion, as you can see, but it becomes catastrophic uh, when the revetment ends, uh, as you head toward Woods Hole. You can see where the, uh, the asphalt is just topsy-turvy.
Yep, we have, we have an opportunity to get to our legislative delegation, uh, this Friday because there's a Kipcott Selectman and Island, uh, Councilor's Association, uh, meeting and that they're all coming to give us a legislative update. Uh, so if we could take some of these pictures and pass them out to the, our rev- our regular legislators, maybe that'll help get a little bit of traction too. They can advocate on our behalf.
Just with the letter because you should be able to have it by then.
Certainly, and that's a meeting that I periodically attend, so that would be.
Yeah, it's at the Seacrest, so it's close by.
And the repair to that picture is cleaning off the bike, the bike path.
Yes.
Repair to that picture is huge.
In the foreground, yes.
So the two pictures, this one to repair that is a huge undertaking.
Yeah. A lot of money.
Taking out a skid steer and.
It's catastrophic, yes, exactly.
And it was shut down for quite a while.
And, you know.
It's a commuter route for a lot of people that work at Woods Hole.
Yes, lots of folks were still driving around it because they still have to commute to work like that, so.
But it's, but, but I might say it's also a sales job. People, so many people use that bike path. People appreciate our, our, the natural environment in this coastal area. So if this degrades and eventually washes away, we've lost an opportunity to gain support across the whole New England east coast, really.
I, I would move approval to send this letter to the concern, uh, to the DEP, but I'd also like Mr. Brown's suggestion that let's send it to our governor also.
Thank you. And legislative delegation.
Bring it to the legislative group. Okay, great.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you for everyone for giving that presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Doug Brown for reminding us about that. Okay, we have a whole bunch of, um, reoccurring recommended events. So let me, okay, let me just get them all out here.
And we do have some corrections that came to us late.
Yes, yeah.
Minor, but.
All right, so first we have Siegel Six Spring Classic Road Race, start-finish Woods Hole Community Center, Water Street, Sunday, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty. Is anyone here for this event? Were there any questions about this?
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
What I'll do is I'm just gonna start with you and if you get approved, you can. Falmouth Village Association, Easter Egg Scramble, Library and Lawn in Peg Noonan Park, Saturday, April eleventh, twenty twenty. Concerts in the Park, Peg Noonan Park, Thursdays, seven-ten, seven-seventeen, seven-twenty-four, seven-thirty-one. Arts and Crafts Street Fair, Main Street, Post Office Road to Shore Street Extension, Wednesday, seven-eight-twenty, rain date Thursday, seven-nine-twenty. Movies in the Park, Peg Noonan Park, Wednesdays, eight-five, eight-twelve, eight-nineteen, and eight-twenty-six. And Holiday Stroll, Queens Byway to Main Street to Shore Street Extension and Peg Noonan Park, Saturday, December fifth, twenty twenty.
I move approval?
All those in favor?
Uh, I guess I would like to.
There's a representative here, pardon me.
Oh, okay. Oh, hi, how are you? You gotta just interject and just stop me. I get focused.
Patricia Cosgrove, manager of Falmouth Village Association.
Welcome. Um, did anyone have any questions about any of these particular recommended events?
Recommendation for, for right now, just be one, two, four, and five, then have a separate conversation in Arts and Craft Street Fair.
Okay.
Okay, I'll amend that, but I'll, or I'll second your motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And as to the Arts and Craft Street Fair?
It's, it is an event that still troubles me with the amount of, uh, traffic it does cause and the disruption it causes on that, in downtown Falmouth on that day. And it ends up being a day that so many of our local people just avoid Main Street completely. It's not an event that I'm particularly in favor of.
All right, any other discussion?
Well, I'm not gonna tell my wife that. It's a, it's an annual event that's looked forward to by an awful lot of people, both in Falmouth and outside of Falmouth, so. I don't know, you'd be the best spokesman for the merchants along Main Street. Do they object?
I believe the merchants find it very beneficial. Uh, it does bring a lot of traffic, especially from out of town. Um, off Cape to visit the local merchants, members. Um, they thrive that day as well. Um, they are also given the opportunity to display their wares on the street as well. You know, on the street with booths or at their storefront within a particular distance of their storefront. Um, we've worked very hard to facilitate and organize this event so that it's something that comes and goes. And at the end of the day, you would never know it's there. I believe that it benefits the town. Um, it gives the town great visibility. And also the fact that the event, this event allows the Village Association to put on other events at no cost to the town. Um, all our events are free to the public.
One thing I was gonna ask, um, I just know that, you know, sometimes the, the side rocks get kind of squeezed and. and, um, just in the last couple of years, I've noticed sometimes if there is somebody who's in a wheelchair, even sometimes people with strollers, some of that navigation on the sidewalks gets sometimes a little bit tough. I think, you know, some of the, it's just by the nature of, you know, just, if you're gonna have a booth, you need a little bit more room, a little bit more room, and sometimes that gets really tight. So just the idea of keeping that access open so that the folks who do come, whether it's families with kids or people, um, with mobility issues, can really move around that space.
We do plan to have, um, access to all of the sidewalk exits, entrances for wheelchairs. Um, they're never blocked. We have the appropriate amount of space and clearance for a fire and rescue, um, at each turn. And also, um, in regards to the walkways, we establish an eight-foot walkway in between all the booths.
Is there any adjustments that you might suggest, Doug, that?
I guess I'm just maybe Chief Duncan can talk about whether we're still having problems with parking that's happening on Shore Street, Walker Street, and, um, Gifford Street. And I think Catherine Lee Bates is even the bigger problem because that is the only emergency access if Main Street's closed off.
With the assistance of, uh, Patty and things like that, they end up posting that whole area. We enforce it. Um, last year, there, there were no issues with, I don't know where they parked, but there were no issues with, um, Gifford Street, which I was surprised. Um, and on Shore Street, again, our officers are keeping that enforced. So tho- those, the, the, the main thoroughfares, um, and, and you're right, there were times that Catherine Lee Bates Road, um, we had a lot of accidents, sideswipes and things like that. But, um, by posting it properly and enforcing it, we haven't had any issues.
Great. Those are just some of the issues I had, so I'm glad to have those answered.
Do you encourage parking at the Mullen Hall School for that?
Mullen Hall is one of our vendor parking spaces. If there is ample extra space, we allow, um, visitors to park there as well. We do utilize the Lawrence School. Um, we have it very heavily supervised with our own staff. Um, and it's very clearly indicated that that's used for street fair parking for visitors. And, uh, we have someone in traffic control over there.
Any other questions?
I just didn't really enjoy the event, so I hope we can keep it going.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Uh, great, thank you.
On my wife's behalf.
You can go home tonight. Um, we have Liam McGuire's Irish Pub, Almost Five Miler, start-finish Town Hall Square, Sunday, five-ten, twenty-twenty. Hello, come on up. And just in case anyone has any questions.
Russ Pelletier, Kings Street.
Anyone have any questions about this event? It's, we've, this is of course a reoccurring event. I don't think we had any feedback, um.
And there are no road closures for this?
What's that?
There are no road closures for this, right?
Move approval?
All those in favor?
Second.
Aye, oh, sorry. Thank you. Spring at Spoor Gardens, Spoor Gardens, Fells Road, Saturday, uh, five-sixteen, rain date is Saturday, five-twenty-three, twenty-twenty. Any questions?
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stroll and roll for CCAHS, Bourne Farm Bike Path to Old Dock Road, Saturday, five-sixteen, twenty-twenty.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If anybody's here to speak to anybody, just.
If anyone's here to speak about it, please just come on up. Otherwise, we're just trying to move along so that folks don't have to be here all night. Falmouth Farmers Market, Marina Park, Thursdays, five-twenty-eight through ten-eight, and Tuesday, eleven-twenty-four, twenty-twenty.
Does anybody hear from you?
Is anyone here from the Farmers Market?
I was just wondering.
I saw Stan earlier, but I don't know.
Just wondering, how was, how it had been going? Move approval?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Uh, Wounded Warrior Project Soldier Ride, Cape Cod, Shining Sea Bike Path, North Falmouth to Woods Hole to North Falmouth, Friday, five-twenty-nine, twenty-twenty. Maybe this year we can get.
Is this moving from, because this was a fall event.
Was a fall event.
Is this now gonna be a two, twice a year event or this? It's gonna be once a year. Um, we're gonna try it again in the, in May.
Okay.
We tried it out once, it didn't work, but we'll try it again.
Maybe better weather.
Uh, move approval?
Second.
Okay, all those.
So this is the Friday before Memorial Day, right?
Right.
Yes.
Well, actually, I think Memorial Day is early this year.
This is the Friday after Memorial Day.
It is, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay. Pedal to Parcels, start-finish Andrews Farm, Sunday, five-thirty-one, twenty-twenty. Anyone here for this?
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Falmouth Classic Club, excuse me, Falmouth Classic Car Club Cruise in Car Show, Marina Park, Sunday, six-fourteen, seven-nineteen, and eight-nine. Any questions about this?
Yep.
Nope.
All those in favor? Or do you have a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
For some of these events that are happening on t- town property, I know we're not putting in our bylaw for the sale of water, but is there, in no occasion we can at least get to these people saying, uh, wouldn't be a bad idea this year to start looking at the how to.
Because they're gonna need to do it next year.
Because next year they will have no choice but to do that.
Peter, do you, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, if I could. Uh, so we will be sending a notification to all of the special event applicants. It was actually mentioned at the last meeting that we had leading up to these approvals that, um, not only do we have the, um, single-use plastic ban looming for September and encourage early adoption of that, but we will also, for the first time, and you'll, you can see it right here on these applications, we're asking them to submit a solid waste and recycling plan. Uh, we will be articulating some goals for, uh, for solid waste reduction as part of this notice out to the special event organizers. So we're, we're definitely moving in that direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We might need to get the Falmouth Water Stewards to put a water station down there at the Marina Park.
Yeah, it's probably a good spot for one. Um, I, I don't know if, did we vote the Classic Car?
Yep.
Okay. Juneteenth Festival, Peg Noonan Park, Saturday, six-twenty, twenty.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Falmouth Education, five K, Falmouth Heights Ball Field, start-finish, Sunday, June twenty-one.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Walk for Hope, start-finish Village Green, Sunday, six-twenty-eight.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Run Jack Run, Family Fun Run or Walk, Trotting Park Soccer Fields and Track, Saturday, July fourth, twenty-twenty.
Move approval?
All those in favor?
Second.
Sorry. Aye. Fourth of July Fireworks, Falmouth Heights Beach and Ball Field, Saturday, July fourth, or rain date, July fifth.
Uh, we don't wanna do that anymore, do we?
Yeah, forget it. How are you? Welcome.
Thank you. Kevin Doyle, three forty-six Mill Road, on behalf of the committee, and as the committee is now standing up and forming up right there. Uh, we all feel very honored to own this piece of the patriotic holiday on, on the Fourth of July and be able to, uh, stage the fireworks for the community. Uh, we're gonna have the same vendors we had last year. Stephen Pelkey will be coming down from Atlas Fireworks, down from New Hampshire. Uh, thirty years of a beautiful record of, of performing. He ha- he has a, uh, warm spot in his heart for Falmouth, and so he always get a very fine show. And he's a guy who puts on two hundred and fifty shows on the Fourth of July across the country. And he, he fires Falmouth personally 'cause, 'cause of his connection here.
'Cause his wife is a Falmouth High graduate.
That happens to be true.
Never hurts.
That is the case. This year is really coincidental as well. It's the fortieth year that the, uh, committee has been tasked with putting on the fireworks for the town of Falmouth, and it also coincides with the four-hundredth year of the, uh, Mayflowers, uh, arrival. And Karen Ronaldo does our annual, uh, design, as you know, and she has woven the two forty and four hundreds together into a very nice design that I think everybody will be happy to see the Mayflower parked in front of Knobbska Lighthouse for perhaps the first time in four hundred years. There it is. So we hope you'll approve, uh, our continuing.
Yes.
We, we do have, by the way, we do have, uh, activities beginning at four o'clock in the afternoon that will provide for food and for entertainment, uh, for those people who are on the ball field nearby.
And where are the T-shirts gonna be sold?
Everywhere throughout the town.
Yeah, Karen will have them in her gallery as well.
I gotta start buying two of each of those. I didn't realize what a collection it was gonna be. Probably gonna be a collector's item.
One for wear, one for saving, right?
A lot of old ones?
We need ninety-two, can I make an appeal to the town?
Yeah, please do.
We need ninety-two, ninety-four, and ninety-eight.
Ah, I'll take a look.
Those are the three missing years. We actually are trying to put together a, a book of those forty years of, uh, of what we've been doing for the town and.
I probably wore those out already, but I'll take a look.
Maybe we can find some photos of you of it all.
Ninety-two, ninety-four, ninety-eight, in case you missed it.
Right, thank you very much. Any questions?
Again, back to the Chief Dunn, if we could. Um, I certainly been very impressed with how well the traffic plan that was inst- I think it was in two thousand thirteen has worked since then. Is there anything you would like to comment either about the traffic, or I also do know we had a few more incidents this year than in the past and?
Uh, no, you're, you're correct. We finally were able to, uh, have an exit plan, and the exit plan seems to work where we don't have traffic tied up for four or five hours after the event. Um, and we're gonna continue with that. We improve on it every year. Uh, and hopefully this is a, uh, good year.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and thanks to your staff, for all their extra efforts. I know they don't get a day off on that.
No, they're, uh, they, they, they're probably the only fifty people that would like to see the fireworks stopped. It's mandatory they come to work.
Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion?
I move approval?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Falmouth Sprint Triathlon, Surf Drive Beach, Sunday, July twelfth. Anyone here for that event? Do I have a motion?
Uh, I guess I, back to Chief Dunn and Glenn. I did have a question at the, last year's Sprint Triathlon, uh, the road was, post is gonna be closed for that.
I don't think the chief here, chief, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Now, for the triathlon last year, the Sprint Triathlon, they put up signs announcing road closure. Was that on your request or were they taking that on their own?
No, they did that on their own.
Okay. Um, is there any way we can let them know?
We put them on notice that is not to happen again.
Right.
That the Board of Selectmen issued no such approval, and they indicated that that would not reoccur.
And I understand that we have the authority to do road closures, but the chief also can make that determination his own if he, if, if you need to.
That's correct. No, they, that, that was done on their own last year.
Okay.
It just, it just, right, exactly. We had a lot of.
It was confusing.
We had a lot of complaints from folks that reached out to us saying it was confusing, we hadn't announced it, and that we hadn't announced it because we hadn't approved it, so.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, with that, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Rockin' Recovery, Old Silver Beach and Parking Lot, it's Wednesday, seven-twenty-nine, rain date, Thursday, seven-thirty. This is something that, is it two years now or a year?
Uh, this is the third year.
This is the third year, right?
I'm sure, yeah.
Yep.
So, great event for a really great cause and, um, hopefully they'll get a nice day on the twenty-ninth, so.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Coast Fest Concert Marina Park, Banshell, Saturday, eight-one-twenty. Um, I will just say that last year, I haven't heard anything from this year with it being on the agenda, but last year I did hear from two folks, um, two abutters, one commercial and one residential about this particular event. Uh, the commercial abutter was upset with sort of parking that overflowed into, um, his establishment. And, um, and then the residential abutter felt like the music, even though they were across the harbor, was really loud. Um, I don't know that we can do too much about the sound of the, the music, 'cause I think it carries, because you have water there. But just, um, you know, some reminder about the parking. I think it was far more popular than anyone thought it was gonna be last year. And so there weren't a lot of, um, things in place to help direct people, and people were just kind of parking wherever they wanted. So, um, I, I anticipate they'll have a similar turnout, if not more, this year. So if we can just work with them to make sure that they have a plan in place for parking, because it was definitely an issue last year. Also, people just parking kind of on the grass of the town where we don't, we don't want that either, so.
And also, just give them a heads up that as the concert expands, they, they may and probably will outgrow the site. We had concerts here for a few years, the reunion of summers past, benefit concerts, we outgrew the site and went up to, uh, one fifty-one.
Okay, to the fairgrounds. Um, and then I just needed to see on that, what time does it say that it shuts down, the music shuts down?
Ten o'clock.
Okay. So just making sure that that, is it here too?
And I do notice that the, this has quite a few conditions about parking. They're now listed as part of the permit.
Mm-hmm, yes. Exactly. Again, I don't think it was, it wasn't anything intentional. It just became, it was much more popular than I think anyone thought, so.
It was a point we did emphasize with them, I know.
Right, thank you, okay. Do I have a motion?
Move approval?
Do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Butterfly Garden Day, Spoor Gardens, Fells Road, Saturday, eight-eight, rain date, eight-fifteen.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Falmouth Walk, Town Hall Square to Saint Barnabas on the sidewalk, Saturday, eight-fifteen, twenty. Hello, welcome. Any questions about this event? Do you wanna tell us anything about it?
By the way, this is, this is the thirtieth year of the Falmouth Walk, when Tommy Leonard and Eddie Doyle, the famous bartender from Cheers, started it thirty years ago. There's one charity that they supported. Late, uh, lately, we've been supporting ten charities, and every time I turn around, they added some more, so now we're up to thirteen charities. And last year, we missed forty thousand dollars by five hundred bucks.
Oh, wow.
So this year.
Get that, get, make that five hundred bucks, so.
Yeah. Any, any updates on the, uh, the walkway plans?
So far, progressing extremely well. We have, we have the plaque. It's, it's gorgeous.
Great.
Gorgeous. I'll have it tomorrow.
Awesome.
Move approval?
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. New Balance Falmouth Road Race, Woods Hole to Falmouth Heights, eight-sixteen, twenty-twenty. Okay, anyone here for that? New event that we've never had.
Move approval?
Okay, all those in favor? Second, sorry. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, aye, thank you.
With gratitude for all the good work they've worked.
Yes, all the reinvestment back into the community. Uh, Rotary Club Craft Fair, Banshell and Marina Park, nine, Saturday, nine-five, Sunday, nine-six, and then rain date, nine-seven. Also a really great event.
I would move approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, Striper Fest, Marina Park and Banshell, Saturday, nine-twenty-six, rain date, nine-twenty-seven. This is an event that we did get an email about, um, from a number of individuals. Um, come, come on up.
Yeah, sure.
Introduce yourself.
Uh, Chris Meegan, the owner and publisher with On the Water.
Um, so we did, were any of the folks who emailed us, are any of them here tonight? We did have an email, just people concerned that the event has outgrown the space. Um, they were kind of talking about, um, some of the parking interfering with other folks who are trying to use their boats in the, the marina. Uh, what else were they saying? I'm trying to remember the other. Oh, thank you.
I think that was a major one.
It's, uh, this is from people, I guess they're mostly boat owners. We are boat owners who currently rent slips at the town marina. We're opposed to the continuing use of the Marina Park for the annual Striper Fest. This event has outgrown this site. The event uses all the parking areas that are used by the slip owners, guests, so it makes it almost impossible to use your boat that weekend. We would also like to point out that this is not a one-day event. They start setting up Thursday, dismantle on Sunday afternoon. Finally asked that we deny this event due to its impacts on slipholders, marina guests, and surrounding businesses. Regards, uh, Jelena Augusta, Kevin and Christina, Andrea, Todd Augusta, Paul and Patty, Winderg, Michael Augusta, Bobby and Mary Ann Olson, Captain Bruce Grantshaw, Jeff and Lexie Hamilton, and Joseph Drole. Also, her comments that, does Windfall Market actually, uh, have to put people out to protect their parking spaces?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. That's the first I've heard of that email. I'm surprised I hadn't seen that until, in, or seen it or heard about it today.
Yeah, we just got it over.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right, that makes sense. Uh, not to, not that I'm aware of. West Marine came on board as a sponsor this year, so I know that they are working with their customers out front as well, but that's the first I've heard of any incident. I know that they use, I think they have a parking lot to the left of them that they, or maybe that's not their parking lot. There's, there's a parking lot to the left. I know that they've been using that as a parking spot as well, but I have not heard of that, uh, that quite, that concern.
Would you say that estimates of four thousand people in attendance would be?
Through, they, they come and go throughout the day. The first, the first thing will start at around nine AM in the morning with, um, with, uh, the boat demo rides for Yamaha. And so we get majority of our traffic, probably comes in a period of like two-thirty to five o'clock. That's gonna be the majority of the traffic. So in the, from nine to there, you get, folks that come and go. They're doing a demo ride and they leave. Um, and then I would say that, yeah, culmination's probably around between three and four o'clock as far as the, the high point for it. We started working with Lawrence School, and we have two buses run from Lawrence School. That was the first year we did that. We used to park over at, um, I guess at Christmas Tree Shop Mall, I'd call that parking lot, 'cause we worked with them. They wanted us to park over there. They wanted the business from the folks coming over afterwards, shopping, hitting the restaurants, such. Um, then I think they just got bought out in the last year or so, so we decided to move it over to, to the Lawrence School. Um, we've been pretty village vigilant as far as the parking on that side. I can see there might be a question as far as start setting up the tents, 'cause we have to set them up on Friday, so we start to block off some of those areas there on Thursday. But, yeah, I'd li- I know, I know most of those folks, and I'd like to reach out to those guys if there's any questions or concerns that they have. We've had it there for ten years. It's more or less. But yeah, I'd, I know, I know most of those folks and I'd like to reach out to those guys if there's any questions or concerns that they have. We've had it there for ten years. It's more or less the same crew that we get every year. So, um, I'm surprised that, that, that-
I think it's just coming to a head. I've heard from Kevin and others about these concerns in the past, that it's just really getting to be bigger and bigger. So I guess finally they, they decided to speak out.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I would love to sit down with them if there's any questions or concerns and see how we can accommodate them. I was gonna say, the reason I came was to say how well we've worked with Greg Fraser and his group, so I'm surprised to hear that. Greg's been great. We take that one dock out front and, and we have probably ten or twelve boats. I'm not sure where, um, I know that they all have parking on the street, on, on the road, right in front of the marinas. So I'm not sure what they're talking about, if they're talking about up top on the deck? Or if they're talking out in front, 'cause nobody parks along that kind of stretch right along that's parallel to the harbor, um, on that. With that, we make sure of. So as far as up top, I'm, I'm, I'm not familiar with, uh, anything below.
Peter, did you?
Yeah, I did reach out to MBS Director Greg Fraser and asked him if he had heard any complaints. And he said he had not, which is, obviously, that doesn't mean the complaints aren't valid. We have them now. He did offer one suggestion to potentially mitigate the concerns, which is, he said that, um, one issue that has come up in the past is the problem with the shuttle buses getting in and out of the marina at the conclusion of the event. My suggestion would be to assign a detail officer to move the inters, to move to the intersection of Scranton and Main Street when the event ends to clear Scranton Ave, so the buses do not get bogged down in the traffic. So that was, he said, otherwise the event seems to be well organized and responsive to any requests we've made.
So what?
We have a detailed officer on there. Whether or not they're inside, or whether or not we need to add another detailed officer to move outside, we can do that. That's easy enough to do.
So I guess, I would, my inclination would be to approve it with sort of the conditions that you, maybe, you know, meet with these folks or and sort of revisit what your plans are around either details or parking, or how you might be able to alleviate some of, um, obviously, our window for beautiful weather isn't.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's limited, somewhat limited. That time of year, people are really trying to get those last days in, 'cause they're at the end of September, so. Um, I think people probably are, are just a bit more kind of, you know, aware when they lose a weekend like that. So if we can have a bit more cooperation, so that folks can get to their-
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. We can sit, we can work with them.
Can the setup is on Thursday?
Say it again.
Can you explain the reason why they rationed off of the setup being Thursday with the event on Saturday?
They set up tents on the field, so they start setting up the tents on the field and then the, the last tent they put up is on Friday, which is the parking lot. So the only thing we do is we wait until Thursday clears out from all of the, um, Thursday night, we wait until everyone clears out from the party boats that are coming back in and such. And then, once the cars move out, we block it, so they can set up Friday morning. So as far as the field is concerned, they set up on Thursday, and then as far as the parking lot goes, they set that up on Friday. Just 'cause they, there's not enough time for it on the start at Saturday morning at nine AM for them to set up a tent that size.
Certainly not on Saturday, but I'm, I'm just trying to think whether the Thursday is, or could we say, so what time do you typically start on Thursday, setting up?
Uh, they'll do the field on Thursday. They'll, so they'll start in the morning on the field on Thursday. I don't think there's any questions or concerns as far as the field. I think it's the parking as far as there, and we try to limit any kind of interference with the parking lot on Thursday. And then, at the end of the day on Thursday, we'll block it off with the sawhorse that the town brings down, so that on Friday, when they come in, they can set it up.
How do you manage the boat rides without interfering with that causeway, the access for the boat owners?
So Yamaha has a trailer. I don't know if you've been down there or not. Yeah, Yamaha has a trailer down there and what they do is they register them and then they bring them down in a group. So that, as far as, they register them up top, they've got twelve boats that are running, but there's always probably, you know, last year they ran ten, there was probably five out and then five in. So all they're doing is bringing down the group that's going on the next boat, and then they're registering up top and then they bring the group down and they go out.
And there's not a big waiting line on the pier?
I, I've not seen any waiting line there. I've seen a waiting line up in our event, but I don't see it down below.
Now, do you agree that this is growing each year?
Uh, I think we're kind of maxed out, to tell you the truth. I don't think the event can grow kind of beyond where it's at right now, just based on the footprint that we have. I don't foresee it going. The boat number hasn't changed with Yamaha. The sponsorships that we've had are still with us since the beginning. And so I don't foresee this thing growing beyond, uh, the, the footprint that we kind of have right now, which in a sense is limiting to what we're, what, what we can grow to. I'm not looking to grow any more than it is right now, for the, for, for what we do. And our intent when we did this was to have it on a shoulder season, because having sat as a chairman of the board for the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce, we always talked about early spring and later. Unfortunately, the fall's becoming even nicer and nicer. The shoulder season's being kicked out even more. The problem when you get into October is the weather becomes just-
Too unpredictable.
Our October this year was, was worse than the month we're having right now.
Absolutely.
You know?
Would you be willing to, I don't know if the Board wants to consider, but would you be willing to try to look these folks up and try to work through these?
I know many of them. That's why I was a little bit surprised. The Augustals are at the event, you know, I know them. And, and so, um, I, I wish they had reached out to me, but they didn't. Maybe they feel like they could.
Think you know they saw it in the paper Friday?
Yeah.
Like we all do.
Yeah.
And said, oh geez, you know, they probably just-
Yeah, I mean, I think you're hearing the concern and obviously, you know, the goal has always been for this to be a great community event, so I think, you know, if you're able to have that conversation and work with-
I know these folks, I would love to get the email forwarded to me and then that way I can meet with them and say, you know, what are the parking concerns? We'll help out anywhere we can with that. We have monitors over at the Lawrence School as far as, you know, and I think that was probably, we may have had a few more people parked this year, 'cause they knew they couldn't park at the Christmas tree shops. They tried to get a little closer to the event. I think, once they're educated this year as to Lawrence School is where we're, we're parking, we have two buses running back and forth. And I think it's an excellent idea with having another officer out front to move those buses through, 'cause that's one of our concerns as well.
Yeah, or maybe even designating some more spots that are left open for folks who are, you know, coming to use their boats or however that's done. Okay. Any other?
Yeah, just a question of, for our town managers. Uh, are we gonna have any road closures at that time of the year because of the water main activity?
September twenty-ninth? Uh, I believe it'll start back up, but it's gonna be significantly further east by that time.
Alright. Well, further east than there, than Scranton Avenue?
Well, yes. In their spring work.
Okay.
Should be beyond Scranton by that time.
That, yes, just made me sweat a little bit.
People are just gonna have to swim to your event if they wanna get there, so.
Getting into our own office is the tough part of a while. I can imagine getting into that event.
Do you think you could ever transfer this event out to the fairgrounds? Would that work for you? I know you got the boat rides.
That's the hardest part, is, that's the hardest part, is that it's, um, you know, as far as with our partners that we have there, uh, it, I think that would be the biggest challenge. As far as, I think you would lose that group that comes in here, you know?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Conditional approval with-
Yes, I think you, you heard, we were saying to the-
If, if, if I could just have somebody forward that to me, I'll sit down with that, that group. That'll be great.
You can have my copy. It has some scribbles on it, but, okay?
They're worth something, so save it.
Yeah, exactly.
Hey, how would you want me to follow up with that? Just sit down with them?
If you'll just get back in touch with, um, town manager's office and, and-
Contact our office.
Contact, and then we can just kind of find out what.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Current, the Kerwin Murray Memorial Bike Ride Tour de Falmouth, start-finish Surf Drive Beach, Sunday, ten eleven twenty, rain date, ten twelve twenty. I think this is the third year now. Great fundraising for homelessness prevention.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Falmouth in the Fall Road Race, Woods Hole to Falmouth Heights Beach, Sunday, November one. Hi, yes, welcome.
No, 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 it's not me.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Move approval.
Okay. All those in favor? A second? All those in favor? Okay. That was a second from Mr. Brown. I sensed he was seconding. June Dog, Falmouth Heights to East Falmouth Elementary School, Sunday, June seventh.
I would move approval. It's a great little event.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Zuma Women's Half Marathon in Ten K, Seacrest, North Falmouth, Bike Path, Old Silver Beach Lots, November, excuse me, September twenty-seventh. Anyone here for that?
I move approval.
All those in favor?
I just wanna reiterate the number one condition, that we're not doing any road closures for this event.
Yes.
It's on the condition, I think that's been said to them. And certainly, we've got some concerns in the past about road closures for that.
Great, good point, thank you. Okay, do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, new recommended, Shakespeare at the Bandshell, Richard Mover Bandshell, August eight, ten, eleven.
I think it's twelfth.
I think that's supposed to be a two. Yeah, one and two, yeah, twelfth, seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third. Is anyone here for this event? Okay. Any questions about it?
Is there any charge for this?
I don't know, that's a good question.
I don't recall that coming up during our discussion.
I guess it's just the permit.
That's what they, that's what they pay for us.
Right.
I believe it's free.
Oh, you mean free to the public, you mean? I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah.
I believe it's free.
I move approval.
Okay, all those in favor? A second, excuse me?
Second.
Yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have any other questions?
I just wanna make sure we're not conflicting with, so clearly this is not on the Thursdays, to conflict with the town ban, right?
Correct, we did look at the dates and-
It's thirteen twenty and that's avoiding the road race also. Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. It's a nice new event. Okay, we have a wedding ceremony, Alfieri, Old Silver Beach, Saturday, the twenty-sixth of September.
They're gonna miss the Striper Fest.
Yeah, that's where they're gonna, that'll be the after-party. I don't think we had. You move approval, second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, okay. We have a reoccurring not recommended. I know some folks are here to talk about it tonight, the Bike Parade. Falmouth Village Association, Main Street to Shore Street Extension, Saturday, July fourth, um, twenty twenty. Welcomed. And our chief of police is here tonight, and I know that, um, there was some conversation that went on earlier today about some potential, um, workarounds. Essentially, this event wasn't approved by the events committee because, um, there's been a concern and actually, this board had a presentation from Chief last year, um, about the fact that that weekend is just so activity laden that closing Main Street, we just don't have the bodies in the police department to really do it. And so the events committee didn't recommend it. Um, and I know that you asked to be on our agenda to discuss it again, so welcome. Introduce yourself if you would.
Donna Buckley, I'm a member of the board of the Falmouth Village Association. Um, it's, you know, it's been a difficult conversation for us. We're talking about, um, an event especially designed for families and children. Um, it's been going on for, as best I can figure out, about twenty years. It's become a, a, a part of the Fourth of July celebration and, you know, and the location is, is a big piece of that. We are, you know, mindful of the fact that there are significant challenges to the resources available to make the event safe and, and it does involve a lot of road closures. Um, you know, so for this year, um, we, we, we've tried to figure out whether there's an alternative, but I want to, to make sure that we all understand that we don't wanna become victims of our own success. You know, we, that, this event is, is incredibly important. Um, it's a big part of the Fourth of July, um, and people look forward to it. Um, so I hope that we use the time that we have now to think about the bigger problem, which is that, you know, if we want people to come here and we want to, to maintain the level of attractiveness, we all need to put our heads together to figure out how we make sure that we have enough resources to do that. So we have talked with the chief, um, and, and put our heads together. And for this year, what we would like to do is, um, and I think the fireworks committee talked about this, it's a special year, um, the four-hundredth anniversary of the, the, um, the landing. Um, so we're conceptually thinking about Independence Week. So we'd like to have a permit granted tonight for the Saturday before the Fourth of July. Keep the, keep the location on Main Street, um, and, you know, the, the chief, and actually, our conversation this morning, sort of developed this idea of a, of a week-long event, so we want the road to be closed for the week up to the Fourth. Just kidding.
That actually would probably be easier. You could just park two trucks and call it a day, one on either end.
So, what, what we'd like to do is ask the board to approve a permit for Saturday, June twenty-seventh. Essentially, we'll move the Bike Parade to then, but incorporating it into the concept of Independence Day by, by maintaining that theme.
Independence Day, 'cause school is ending, so it's really-
Pretty much, you know.
The independence that children really care about.
It's a transition, you know, school's ending.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we're transitioning and, and still keep that, keep that theme going.
Okay. Chief, would you just come up and, and again, I know you and, you and I spoke and I know that you guys had a conversation earlier today. Um, can you just tell us about your feeling about that, um, the June twenty-seventh date? Is that the date?
Yeah, June twenty-seventh. Um, it, it's a lot more workable than July fourth, a- as the board's aware. July fourth is a busy day for the police department. Last year, we had a hundred and thirty-five calls for service. This event, as she said, has become successful. When it originally started, it was a ten or fifteen-minute event, two cruises, one in the back, one in the front, get them down, done, have a nice day. It now takes an hour and a half and nine police officers. I don't have nine police officers to use on July fourth, to, for a bicycle. So we did have, we went out and we walked. We talked about using the schools. We've talked about different things. We talked about, um, doing it prior to the July fourth. I did some checking, uh, the week before July fourth, our calls for service were sixty-eight for the day, approximately twenty-five for that day. So is it doable? Yes. Is it also doable the week prior? Yes, 'cause I don't have the entire department on standby, so if I need some officers, I can maybe adjust them a little bit. So that's Saturday. I've talked to my command staff and it was my command staff that really had said last year, enough is enough.
Well, you came to the board, I mean, that was something we talked about and-
So, I, I believe it will work that weekend. We, we'll make it work, if the board so's decides to have it on, on June twenty-seventh.
Is there any chance- The duration will, I'm sorry, duration will be as long?
It's still as long. I mean, there, there's hundreds of, I don't know. Thousands, thousands of kids, but yeah, it, it's, it takes time to set up, get the offices in place. It's gonna still take nine officers. And they're kids. They don't hurry up down the road, so it's, it's getting them from the Village Green to, uh, Mullen Hall. So it will probably be about an hour again.
Any chance that, for either, whether it's the Fourth of July or the twenty-seventh, the Catherine Lee Bates would be a better road for this?
It's no better. We did the numbers. It's still as, as many people, July fourth, uh, between, and I'll just give you, I, I researched the calls for then during that parade, just so you have an idea. I mean, you gotta remember, there's only seven officers pretty much assigned to the shift. We pulled from the beaches, we pulled from those other places. And during that time, we had, uh, serious car accident, we had a domestic going on, as well as all the parking problems going on. So it really does tax the police department.
Because even on the twenty-seventh, I'm concerned about closing Main Street again during, during, still, it's Jul- June season. To have the Main Street closed for, I mean, the, the event's gonna be an hour and a half, but you have to close the street ahead of time. Are you going to?
Well, we, we do it just as they're ready. It's, it's, there's sections of it that are closed to gather them. It's like hurting kids.
But are the, is parking restricted for the few hours before that?
No, parking's not restricted.
So they'll be parked cars there?
You just gotta come to the microphone.
And you have to introduce yourself again.
Patricia, manager. So they start at ten, we stop the traffic about quarter of. Takes about an hour and a half. And they're done usually by eleven-thirty.
So what does the car do that's parked there at nine fifteen for half an hour to do something at Ace Hardware and now wants to leave?
He watches the bike show.
He watches the parade.
Most people do.
So you think the Village Association is okay with this new idea?
Yeah, we, we've talked about it.
The Association's actually here. Um, the members are here, so, you know, Frank's here, Richard's here, Tom's here, um, and Deb's here. So we are, um, you know, we, we really tried not to have the selectmen have to decide one way or the other whether to have this parade.
Well, I mean, to be honest, I mean, we all love this parade, but if our chief is telling us he can't do it, we, you know, and we, and yes, if we have more bodies in another year or two and it's a different situation, but we just, you know, the, that Fourth of July, and of course, everyone wants, it's a great day and it's fun for kids to do and, but the most important thing is for, you know, us to be able to ensure public safety, not just, you know, for the parade, for everything that's going on. So this sounds like just a great compromise, because it can kind of still have that momentum of summer, that excitement, but just be more doable and, um-
And it is, it is a parade, you know, and that's why when we, we talked this morning about an alternative location, it sort of defeats the whole purpose, because there wouldn't be anybody to watch it. Uh, so that's the, you know, that's what necessitates the Main Street location. It's short. We're hoping that it's, that it has the same robust attendance that it's had on the Fourth of July. Quite frankly, we're concerned that, you know, we may lose this excitement about this event by having to move it at all, because, I mean, we're talking about a twenty-year tradition. This is a big deal, um, so.
How many people are you expecting added?
Uh, we can only go by, by, you know, what we've gotten on the Fourth of July, we have no idea whether anyone will come on the twenty-seventh.
What, so how many people did you have added last year?
We counted back a couple of years ago, at least nine hundred kids.
Cause your application talks about two hundred.
Two hundred plus.
I'm not sure I could support that then.
No, we, I mean, we really do, we, we estimated it the first year at two hundred, but it's grown every year.
Then you should change the application to be more accurate. I think two hundred plus when you're expecting, and I thought you had said a thousand, and for the application to say two hundred, but you're saying expecting thousands is.
We've come close to a thousand.
Then don't put the two hundred plus on your application, please.
And we, guys, we have to anticipate the impact, so we need a realistic number, you know, and we understand you can't spin it down to the exact, no, bicycle number, but, uh.
No, I think this is a good, a good compromise, cause the other issue is that if you have it on, you know, if you were gonna say, let's just try it, we're gonna do it on the Fourth of July, and there's an event that pulls the officers away, then the bike parade doesn't happen, and so that's also not something that, you know, if, if it can't be staffed with nine officers, because there's an incident that those people have to go and respond to, that's gonna take precedence, then now where are we, right, we've invited all these folks, and we can't have this parade, so I think, you know, this, I, I get it, we're moving it back, you don't, it's a new thing, you don't quite know what you're gonna get for turnout, um, but it can be a sure thing, and at least, you know, we can, we have some time now to do that promotion, to get people on board with it, um, and allow it to happen in a safe way, so, um, yeah.
Just one more question, and that's the trap, park cars, do you put signs up that warn people?
That the road is gonna close?
That, you know, that that road is gonna be closed, and that they won't be able to get out.
We do post through our social media, but we'd be happy to post again on Main Street for the, the duration of the two hours.
I think you need to.
We do that for the stroll, and we also do that for the street fair.
It's only fair, cause I mean, there's, sometimes people really do need to leave, and, and you don't want a safety issue mixing cars with children on bicycle.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, you probably should put it up, like, early morning, just say, you know, r- street closing today.
I think that's actually something that, is that something the police department needs to do, or?
Chief, do you know if the?
We, we can do it, or we can do it in conjunction with the business association, like, when they do the, uh, street fair and different things like that, she posts it, uh, and we just enforce it, but we can, we, we, we should, we can give her some signs to let people know it's a temporary closure.
Great, especially just, again, because it's a new day, so people who are around here, you know, who are anticipating that for Fourth of July, it, it'll be important for them to, if they're running their errands, to know, so, um, just to stick around and watch it, so. Get yourself an Ace Hardware, and then get your coffee and hang out, so.
Cause on Fourth of July, less people are actually working, so it's not so urgent to get places, but on the twenty-seventh, it might be business as usual.
So do you need to amend this? Is that what you're doing?
Yep.
Okay, so with the amendment of June twenty-seventh, um, for the bike parade, do I have a motion?
Uh, move approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, thanks, thanks, everyone, for, that was a quick turnaround to work it out today, so.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Okay, well, here we go. Okay, that takes care of all of our events. I just switch out. Okay, under business, discuss memorandum of understanding with the fire union. So, thank you, I see representatives from the union, and our chief is still here, uh, Mr. Suso, did you just wanna introduce this topic?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, um, and members of the board, uh, you recall, uh, back in January, uh, when you hosted the, uh, community meeting at the high school, uh, regarding, uh, fire department operations, uh, included in that public presentation, uh, was a review of, uh, four alternatives, uh, for, uh, enhancing staffing, uh, beginning July one, and, uh, the memorandum of understanding that is, uh, before the board, uh, this evening, uh, that we, uh, really discussed and worked out in conjunction with our colleagues in the fire union, who, as you noted, are here this evening, and, uh, Chief Small as well, uh, is in furtherance of one of those alternatives, which is to, uh, provide a voluntary, uh, overtime, uh, staffing of two positions, uh, each shift beginning, uh, July one of this year, which will allow Chief Small to assign, uh, uh, those two positions to the West Falmouth Fire Station at start of shift, and, and again, this is, uh, it is not the only strategy we are pursuing, uh, but it is one that, uh, we have some experience with, as noted in this memorandum of understanding, and I don't know, Madam Chair, if we wanna read this or not, whatever your pleasure might be.
Sure, so, um, just to kind of add on to what, uh, the town manager's saying, so this is something that's been conversation for quite a while, trying to think of how to address, um, you know, both the very kind of hard boundary of some, um, staffing issues, along with, uh, the timeline we have of getting a new station up and going, and getting some, hopefully, if the override, um, passes, eight new firefighters, what do we do as we're trying to sort through this? And, so, um, town manager, assistant town manager, um, and the chief, uh, we, you know, we started thinking about it, spoke with representatives from the union, um, and I know they spoke with their membership, and so it was really an ongoing dialogue to think about how can we best, um, address public safety, and so the memorandum of understanding, which has been signed, um, uh, by the chief and firefighter union president and vice president, um, is as follows, and it's very short, so. The Town of Falmouth Board of Selectmen, working through town manager Julian Suso and fire chief Michael Small, is committed to continuing operation of the West Falmouth Fire Station for the time period beginning July one, twenty-twenty, until the completion of the planned new fire station intended to provide enhanced service to the Town of Falmouth. Beginning July one, twenty-twenty, the town has budgeted staffing resources to provide for the assignment of fourteen firefighters at the start of each of the town's four shifts, to be working from headquarters, east Woods Hole, and North Falmouth Fire Stations. Chief Small and town manager Suso, working closely with the fire union leadership to solicit the voluntary overtime staffing of two additional firefighters per shift beginning that July one, twenty-twenty date. These same two supplemental firefighters to be assigned on the shift to the West Falmouth Fire Station. As a town, in collaboration with the fire union, has been routinely and successfully utilizing the same system of voluntary overtime staffing to allow supplemental firefighter to report to the Woods Hole Fire Station, to staff the ambulance housed there for the past eighteen months, we are confident that we can utilize, excuse me, we are confident we can continue to utilize the same tested approach now to be directed at the West Falmouth Fire Station. In furtherance of this important partnership and collaboration, we have entered into this memorandum of understanding. I don't know if you want to speak further to that before we have further conversation, I'm gonna invite the chief and both the president and vice president of the union to come up, if you're comfortable coming up to answer any questions.
Yeah, my, my other comments, Madam Chair, members of the board, is, uh, to thank, uh, Chief Small and our colleagues in the fire union, um, Mike and Jeff, president and, uh, union president and vice president, for, uh, their continued engagement with us, uh, partnership with us, uh, this has, uh, really been a multi-year, uh, undertaking in terms of, uh, working over the past, uh, five years, within the limits of proposition two and a half, to, uh, uh, appropriately, uh, elevate the, the number of paid firefighter positions, uh, within the limits of the budget, and now we're at the point where, uh, uh, we are nearing the implementation phase, and as you have noted earlier, Madam Chair, also considering, uh, an override which would allow us to add, uh, eight additional permanent firefighter positions, uh, and so this strategy to voluntarily staff, uh, would, uh, fill the time period in between, and in anticipation of the, uh, long-awaited construction of a, uh, a new fire station to serve the residents of the Town of Falmouth, so, and welcome, um, comments from, uh, Chief Small and, uh, union leadership if they care to do so.
Would, any, do any of you wanna make a comment, or?
Well, I have a question.
We don't put you on the spot, you, we'll have Doug answer, uh, ask his question before we.
I have a question to get you started.
Yeah.
So, I think it's nice that you guys have been doing the voluntary, uh, staffing at Woods Hole, and been successful staffing one additional guy eighty percent of the time, that's pretty good, but when now we're considering staffing two additional guys, and that's gonna be the basis of the, the staffing for West Falmouth, so I'm a little bit apprehensive about our level of success, given that we're only eighty percent successful with one guy, and now we're thinking we're gonna do the same thing with two, so it leads me to think maybe the percentage is gonna be lower. And what I was, uh, looking at the fire station, uh, location study, and seeing that the four-minute catchment in downtown is sixty percent, that's pretty good, I know the chief wants to staff more people downtown, because that's the biggest workload, but what I was wondering if he would consider is the same memorandum of understanding, but not to use it for West Falmouth, but to use it for downtown, for the additional staffing to supplement the services in, in downtown area, that way we know the fire station in West Falmouth's not gonna be shorthanded.
Do you wanna, chief, do you wanna come on up, and maybe Mike and Jeff, if you wanna come up? You've waited, you've been here since seven, so you might as well come on up. So if we could just take that in two parts, so can you just speak to, um, your thoughts about the success, the potential success of staffing those two voluntary positions, and why, um, why both, you know, you as fire chief and as the union think that that's something that you can enter into as a memorandum of understanding?
You know, the percentage of time is gonna be successful would require me to guess, and I don't wanna guess. I think Mike can speak to.
Mike Mueller, president of the Falmouth Firefighters Union, um, I, prior to entering in this agreement, I polled our membership, and, uh, about seventy percent of our members responded to the, uh, poll that I put out, and that was probably about the amount of people that are regularly doing overtime, don't have, uh, another side job, or, or other job that takes up their time. Of the seventy percent that replied, about eighty-five percent of them, so eighty-five percent of the seventy percent, said that they would be interested in working additional overtime shifts at the West Falmouth Fire Station. To your, um, question about the, I think that the, the work, this, this.
There's a lot of pieces to this, yeah.
There's a lot of pieces to that, so, the Woods Hole being staffed eighty percent of the time now, there's still a lot of overtime on a regular basis throughout the course of the day, because of the, the staffing arrangement we have now. Conceivably, after July first, this, that type of overtime, uh, to meet a minimum number, is going to, in theory, go down significantly. So, instead of there being avail- lots of available hours throughout the course of the day, the, the way that we're going, that the plan is to, to run the department, there, there won't be that, and that's, that's been one of the goals of the town, to try and save money on overtime by having more staff. So conceivably, after July first, the people that participate in that continuous overtime aren't going to be able to do so in theory, so therefore, the thought is that having this type of overtime built, being able to be taken, will be more appealing, more likely to be, to be taken by those members.
Cause you're not just getting the one, uh, the whatever, the one hour, cause you're getting called in, and you don't actually go in, cause you're not needed after fifteen minutes, or whatever it might be.
Correct.
You're actually a designated shift that you pick up.
You'll show up at the beginning of your shift, and you'll stay there till the end of the shift.
And you'll make that overtime for that whole shift, right?
That's correct, yep.
Which also creates a nice transition for those officers who are used to having overtime as part of their job.
Correct.
If we didn't have this, actually, they would be saying, all of a sudden, they're in a position where they're not getting overtime that they used to.
Correct, and then, um, also, to your question as to whether this could be used at the headquarters fire station, I think that it, it's a different, it's also a kind of a different, uh, animal, I think that this would be, in my opinion, it would be more successful trying to fill it in the West Falmouth Station, um, being that, the, just the, the apparatus and the staffing that, that are there, you know.
I mean, I'll just say, it's, it's theoretically, you don't know whatever's gonna happen on a shift, but theoretically, it's an easier shift.
Correct, because you, you're, you're, uh, you're not, a- at the headquarters station, there's much more apparatus, there's an ambulance, whereas in the east, uh, excuse me, in the West Falmouth Fire Station, it's just the engine, so theoretically, you're still going on, on, uh, medical calls and going out on things, but you're not tasked with, usually not tasked with bringing the person to the hospital, and, and go, following through with all that stuff, you know, you, you go, uh, onto the scene, do the first aid, you know, first responding stuff, immediate, immediate assistance, and then the ambulance shows up, load them up, and they go, and then you get to go back to the station, so you kinda do half of the thing, so in theory, I, it's of my opinion that we'd be more successful doing this.
More successful, filling the overtime.
Exactly, with the West Falmouth side, instead of having them come to headquarters.
Hmm, interesting.
I'm not really interested in how easy or hard the overtime is, I've got limited resources, I've got the headquarters district, which is fifty percent of the calls. That's four thousand calls a year out of the headquarters district. When the ambulance leaves the headquarters district, which it does every single day of the year, that's gonna effectively leave one person back at headquarters, the shift commander is the shift commander, that's a headquarters fire station that is now one person left, can't go anywhere. What is, what is the headquarters district to me? It's a hospital, it's multiple nursing homes, it's multiple elderly housing complexes, it's two high schools, a junior high school, a middle school, a elementary school, probably eighty percent of the hotel rooms in town, um, it's got explosive growth occurring in the headquarters district, to ru- to run short at headquarters is, is, I'm not gonna do that.
But the only reason I suggested it was because I know that you're doing well now, and I don't wanna penalize you for that, but.
But they can't go out on the one, they can't do the one, the problem is, they can't go out with one person anymore, right?
But aren't you planning a significant increase in staff at headquarters in July first?
Just two people.
Just two.
It would require stripping two out of headquarters.
You mean, two additional people?
Two additional.
Right, so four.
Right.
And then the shift commander.
Right.
Right, and all four of those people go out, the only person who can't go out is the shift commander.
If the ambulance leaves with two, that leaves the lieutenant back there, and a fire engine, a ladder truck, uh, e- everything that we cover at headquarters is by himself, effectively by himself, and he's, you can have the headquarters fire station sitting, effectively unmanned.
Okay. That's why you don't let politicians run the fire department.
Any other questions from the board, and I'll take some, some questions or comments from folks that are here, or anything else, um, from Mike, or Jeff, or chief? Anyone else from the board? So, if folks wanna have, just direct your questions up here, and then we can have follow-up with the chief if necessary, if anyone has any questions or comments. I just, do you wanna talk about this now, since it was here?
Yeah.
Yeah, come on up. And then, then you come up.
Amy Sellers, sixteen old Dock Road, West Falmouth.
And I didn't mean to stop you before, but.
No, I totally get it, I, I wasn't sure.
Yep.
I'm all new to this. So, it's, so the chief of police, they're not allowed to take any vacation during Fourth of July, Fourth of July's on a Saturday this year, last year, this town was crazy on Fourth of July, and it was in the middle of the week, so, it's July fifth, Sunday, what if no one volunteers for overtime at West Falmouth? What happens then?
Chief, do you wanna, I mean, I can tell, we, we've spoken about this, I'll just, I'll just tell you, and the chief will stop me if, if I'm wrong, but, uh, my understanding is that if, say, one person volunteers and not two, that one person goes, is gonna go to North Falmouth, so then you are, have a more robust response out of North Falmouth, but again, the goal is going to be to try to get people to sta- you know, man those, those days, and we know the peak days already, and I know that we talked about this when we met, that there's conversations about already trying to look at the calendar and think about, you know, obviously, emergencies happen on any day, but, but we have obviously lots of extra calls on those high-peak, um, you know, particularly summer holidays, so that's part of the conversation that I know that the chief and the union's already talking about, but it's not, you're raising a good point, there is no one hundred percent guaranteed three hundred and sixty-five days till we have a new station, that is, and as far as ordering, it's one thing if we're ordering people in for one day, or the police department can order people for Fourth of July, but, you know, I don't think that the chief is gonna order that overtime for the whole year until we have another station.
I, I don't think it's till the new station, I think it's if we get the override.
Yes.
Yes, excuse me, yeah.
And once those five men get hired.
Yes.
Is when we'll be done with the problem, but.
Yes.
A new fire station, there'll be a, a different way of, we're gonna be.
Yes, excuse me, I misspoke, it's not until we get a new station. If we get the, yes, I mean, hopefully, again, and, and let me just say that part of the, the thought is, this board, and I know we haven't had any weigh-in for, from FinCom, and it is there, it will be their recommendation at town meeting, but this board is putting forward the article about the firefighters, because there is a very significant need that we cannot do within our regular budgetary constraints, and so, we, you know, the goal of this board is to really make this, um, question for the override hopefully successful, and we understand that part of that is really responding to concern about West Falmouth, and so that's part of what we're trying to work with, with the chief and with the union, to try to address that concern with, within some significant limits that we have, again, hoping that we can get an override that gives us more bodies to staff appropriately.
And, and I just wanna also remind people that we have added nine police officers in the past five years.
Firefighters.
I'm sorry, firefighters in the past five years, within the budget constraints.
Yeah.
To do more than that, we just. To do more than that, we just have to have an override to be able to fund more than what we've been able to within the two and a half percent.
Well said. Yeah, I, I think it's important for the people that are gonna be voting on this override to recognize, this is really about equity in public safety. If we're gonna be sliding a certain part of this town, that's not right. And so we really do need to have this staffing. And the, as you can kinda tell from the, the number of calls, the, the level of calls just keeps going up. And we're getting old, and that means there're gonna be more calls because we have more health issues as we get older. So, and so I think we have to recognize that, you know, the town is gonna have to-
There's a need.
There, there's a need, and we can't slight one part of town because we can't afford it, you know? We have managed our budgets extremely well, we have a very low rate compared to most everybody up and down the East Coast, and we just need to think about fairness. And I think that's the only way it's gonna sell. And, but I hope everybody recognizes that, and will think about it seriously, and that, and we all have to sacrifice a little bit to make sure everybody gets the coverage they deserve.
And I just wanna point out too, that the level of service that the Falmouth Fire Department is providing is nationwide, it's pretty good. It's right up there with the, with the best.
Thank you, my name's Todd Taylor, I'm from West Falmouth, and I'm a retired firefighter. It's, it's a difficult situation we're in, we're, we're short-staffed. And I applaud the Union for negotiating to have two guys on a truck. It's, it's a long time coming, and it was a great, great call. But the staffing plan that we're going to is different than what we have today. Today, we have five fire stations open with a ten-man minimum. And on July one, we're gonna have a fourteen-man minimum, and we're gonna have four fire stations open. I, I understand, and there's no debating the numbers, Headquarters Station's a busy station, Station Five is a busy station. But Mr. Patterson just mentioned that the override is very important. But if the override doesn't pass, or hopefully it will pass, and hopefully the town will be supportive of it, maybe this increased staffing and the other stations can be put on hold until we get these new firefighters on, on board. You mentioned sliding an area of town, the volunteer positions at Station Four. Will it get filled? Maybe in November, December, January, February, and March, but it won't be filled in the summertime. It just won't be. I've only been retired two and a half years, and a lot of people, we, we work and we live in the community, and if we're off on the weekends, sometimes you want the weekends off to spend with your family. And you can't expect guys to sacrifice their time with their families to volunteer a position at a fire station because it's unstaffed by the town. It's, it's a complicated matter, it's not an easy solution. But I think we need to, we're, we're pushing into this a little too fast. I went, and we know we have the July first deadline, but there's gotta be a better way. And we have a full-time paid professional fire department, and we're gonna staff one of our stations voluntarily. That, that doesn't sound like it's a, a full-time paid fire department. You know, volunteer is, is, is what it is, you're volunteering your time, if you don't get him, you don't get him. And, you know, you made the, someone made the comment about if we get one guy, then we're gonna put him up to North Falmouth. But that one guy is either gonna go three on the ambulance, or he can't go on the fire truck if the fire truck gets dispatched from that station because they're not allowed to go by themselves anymore. It's, it's complicated, and I'm not, it's very difficult for me to, to talk about, or against my fellow firefighters here. It's not, it's not easy, I'll, I'll be openly honest with you. But it, it's, it's important, very, very important, and people should realize that and recognize that. We shouldn't slight a section of town because of a contract agreement that increased the staffing, but closed the fire station. It just doesn't make sense.
Well, I just wanna, but I just wanna stop you, the contract agreement, nothing in the contract agreement is about closing a station, right? I mean, the contract agreement speaks to the staffing, right?
Okay, I'm sorry.
And so, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts. And we're going from a staffing regimen that is, you know better than I, because you did it, is totally so antiquated and unsafe.
I agree.
And we, and we have swi- we are, you know, moving long overdue to a much safer, much better, it's safer for firefighters, safer for the public. And that's running up against the fact that we don't have enough bodies right now. And those two things are happening at the same time. And, you know, even if we had all the money today to get firefighters, there's going to be a window before we can get them on board.
True.
And there's been a whole bunch of new, young firefighters that have come in this year, and the staffing model's gonna change. So when you say no one's gonna pick up the shifts in, you know, Fourth of July, I think there's, there's a lot of truth to that. But I think at the same time, because our model of overtime is changing so drastically, we're gonna need, we're gonna see how this plays out a little bit. Because the reality is, that overtime system that we had, where you were called back, we're not gonna really have that as much anymore. And so some of these, hopefully these younger guys and older guys, we're not gonna discriminate against them, but we'll be a little bit hungry for some overtime, cause that system is changing. And again, you're, you're right, there is no, it's not an easy solution, but the Union, and this hasn't always been the case, you know, this town has had a tough relationship with the Fire Fighters Union for a while, and not, it's just, it is, happens in many towns. But this group of leadership and the members of our fire department right now are really putting their heads together with the Chief, with the Town Manager, with the Board of Selectmen, trying to come up with a solution. I mean, we all live in this town, we get the same, we are getting, these are our services too. And so nobody's trying to create a situation that's dangerous. But we're trying to work with really, I mean, there are literally hard limits, right? We only have a certain number of bodies, and, you know, people are gonna be sick. People, if, if no one ever got sick or took a vacation day, we could sit down now and, and map out a calendar of staffing for the whole year. So, I mean, your concerns are all valid, there's just no magic question.
I agree, and I, and I agree with the Fire Chief, I mean, I would not wanna take the two guys out of the Headquarters Station, maybe you can take them out of the Station Five Station, but the Headquarters is your main station. That's where it should, a lot of the staffing should be there. But, you know, you were talking about not staffing a fire station at all, and adding additional guys to another station, meaning, let's refer to the East Falmouth Station, where maybe we can implement that after we hire these eight guys. I mean, it's, it's up to you guys, I mean, but it's, you know, we're, we're talking about the safety of, of, of the whole town. You know, this is not the West Falmouth Fire Department, it's not the North Falmouth, it's, it's the town-wide fire department. And really, we should think of it as that. And no town, no, no section of town should be short-staffed, or, or not covered at all. It, it's not easy, I'm not saying it's, I have a magic-
And again, that nothing is, you know, the goal here is to try to come up with a solution. If we don't get the override, we're gonna have to think about another solution, right? We're gonna have to look at our grant, safer grants, we're gonna have to look at what else we might do. If we're getting zero coverage, we have to think about, you know, if none of the overtimes are getting filled, this is not going to be a one-time fix. This is an ongoing, I don't wanna call it a problem, cause, but it's an ongoing challenge that this board and the Chief and the Union and, and the community is gonna have to be part of that conversation. But I think, I think it shows, you know, a lot of goodwill that the Union is going back. I mean, Mike went back to, to his guys and gals and said to them, you know, really, he's not just committing to something, he's asking them, who here would wanna try and do some of this overtime? And you're absolutely right, asking about overtime in general is different than saying, do you want, you know, how about Fourth of July, or? But I, I think this Union is really willing, and this group is really willing to try and work, knowing that, you know, the board's trying to get eight new bodies and a new fire station. There are some much-needed, long-overdue improvements that we're trying to push for, so.
I hope it's not the end of the dialogue before July first, and we can really look at it hard and make sure that we cover it.
And it won't be the end of the dialogue after July first, I mean, that's my point, it's, it's going to be-
Sure, and I'll be supportive, and I'll lead the support to hire eight more, and we probably need more than eight more, to, to run the town properly. It is what it is, and I just hope they work a little bit harder and come up with a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd, yep, Sam?
Yeah, I just, I just wanna say, I mean, the, the things that Todd's struggling with, and the Chief was struggling with, this is an indication that we really don't have an adequate fire and rescue force. We, we need a little bit more capacity in order to be able to address some of these issues. So I think that's the important thing that all of us have to recognize.
Yep.
You go ahead.
All right, good evening, everybody, my name is Mike Smuta, Woodland Road, Pusing Three. The window you were talking about. Coming from the healthcare industry, we have a great number of per diem employees. Would the town consider creating per diem firefighters and paramedics?
I can just tell you, we'd have to bargain it with the Union, because it would be a change in the contract, so.
Correct, correct.
I don't wanna speak for this board, cause we haven't, we don't have it as an agenda item that we've talked about, and obviously we'd have to be part of any kind of contract negotiation.
Right, and per diem employees, straight hourly pay, no benefits? They would have to pay Union dues, because it is, it is a local Union. In the school systems, we have substitute teachers, which are basically per diem on-call people when somebody is out sick or covering vacations. So I think, you know, exploring that should be an option. I did speak to some of the born rescue guys and the sandwich rescue guys at the hospital, and presented the problem that we're having here. And I said, if Falmouth were to create some per diem positions, you know, would you come and work? And three out of the four said yes, cause the three out of the four are driving private ambulances, probably making eight to ten dollars or less than they would if they came here and worked per diem. As far as the residency law, that fifteen-mile limit, I would think because per diem are not permanent staff, that you could take a protractor, draw a sixty-degree circle sixty miles out, which is basically an hour's drive time, and you've probably got a pool of two hundred people that can come here and cover those shifts. If the Chief can make out a schedule, two weeks ahead of time, he knows his open shifts, all of overtime is gonna go to the Falmouth guys first, and then he just puts out a blast text message or email, these are the shifts that opened. Who wants them? My thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, I get there early, cause it's gonna be a busy one.
Madam Chair, just to, just elaborate, some of these issues that were just raised, we are discussing with the Finance Committee. But I wanna be, I always wanna caution everyone not to oversimplify, suggesting that civil service rules shouldn't apply, and collective bargaining can be easily done, and that the standards of the Falmouth Fire Department can be met by a per diem, because it can happen in hospitals. It's really apples and oranges, there are a number of major challenges. I can assure you, there's not a large pool of individuals, individuals out there, fully trained, civil service qualified, who meet all the standards of the state and this fire department, who can step in and work here. It's, it's, it's a fiction, it, we have explored that, we've talked about it. It sounds very appealing, but it's not a reasonable solution.
And if I might comment further, I just wanna underscore, as Town Manager, I have every, every faith and confidence in Chief Small and his command staff to properly manage the manpower available in the department, to work with the Union, to staff the stations appropriately to protect public safety, and that there are a number of challenging and complex issues that go with this. And also, I, also I wanna underscore that I appreciate President Mike's comments, and Jeff's as well, about taking a poll with the Union, and when the Union members step forward in those large numbers and indicate a willingness to support this initiative, I feel very positive about it. I know there are no guarantees, but I'll put, I'll put my money on them anytime, and be highly confident with working with them to, to have this unfold in an appropriate way. So I really, I think the level of participation and engagement is really unprecedented here, and I do wanna underscore that. I've not seen anything like this in any other community, and I've worked in a lot of them, including with fire issues. So I, I really wanna commend and thank the Union leadership, Chief Small, and appeal to residents, and I know the Selectmen see this as well, to give us the opportunity to move forward with this protocol, with this proposal, and, and continue to maintain operations in the West Falmouth Station, even though somebody's just mentioned that it's closing again, and again, that's not the town speaking, I wanna underscore that. Thank you.
Thank you. Go, I'm gonna have Doug, cause you were waiting, and then go, then go ahead.
I just wanna follow up on what you had said earlier, that if we only get one volunteer, they would go to North Falmouth. I hadn't heard that before, and I wonder if the Chief could elaborate on that? And I'm curious if there's some flexibility to possibly, if you had the one volunteer, then maybe you might be able to shift somebody from another station to, to make that, to finish that off, if that's possible.
So shifting from one station to another is not possible? I mean, it's possible, again, though, it's borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, it would have to be a body out of the two busiest stations that generate eighty percent of the calls. If we're successful with one person stepping up, that'll be a three-person crew in the North Falmouth Fire Station, three person on the ambulance, three person on the fire engine, they'll operate as a crew. So even though some folks may be waiting a little bit longer for that first contact, what you're getting out of that first contact would be significantly better than anything that they've ever had. It's addition by subtraction, having a more powerful punch at a fire, having a more, a larger crew at the scene of a medical emergency. Like I said, even though you may have to wait a little bit longer, what you're getting out of that is significantly better. And that's why we would consider floating, if only one person steps up, to have a three-person crew in North Falmouth.
And can you just speak to, so, starting on July one, you're gonna have two in Woods Hole, and then you'll have two in North Falmouth, right? So can you talk a little bit about how that might impact? So even if you had a day and there was nobody in West Falmouth, can you just talk about why that is different? I wanna make sure I understand what is different from what's happening right now, and how that impacts where those, that apparatus might go.
So one of the global upsides to finally having the fourth ambulance in Woods Hole staff twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, is that it handles most of the overflow calls in the Headquarters District. By doing so, that keeps the North Falmouth ambulance that services the northwest part of town available for that part of town significantly more than it normally does. Right now, when the Woods Hole Fire Station is, if it's only one person, that ambulance is out of service.
Can't go out, okay.
The second call that comes into Headquarters, the North Falmouth ambulance, for a good part of that, gets pulled out of North Falmouth, has to come into Headquarters to handle that call. Having the fourth ambulance in service is considerably, keeps that ambulance and that crew in North Falmouth, because they're not having to come into Headquarters to handle the overflow.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No, that's good.
Thank you, Chief, Mark?
Mark Fineran. We had a hiring freeze beginning in two thousand and eight with the recession. And the recession's long since over, and we're a little late to the dance with this override and, and addressing this problem. And I just wanna point out to the people in this town, I hate to be the one up here again wiping the lipstick off the pig. But before this, we saw that we're short on firefighters, and we had, on police officers, and we had to cancel a child's, a children's parade that was very popular. And we're also very short-staffed at the DPW. I mean, we can't maintain our water system or our fire hydrants, cause we just don't have the manpower. So this problem is gonna go on for years. And I just want everybody to be aware of it, and that there's, there's more coming after this. And I'm sure it's gonna be more overrides, but at some point, we gotta right this ship, because it, it certainly is wrong at the moment. And it's, it's, it's really not proper the way we're maintaining our town. That's all, thanks.
I would just say that, you know, obviously, the recession was in two thousand and eight, and it took a few years for municipalities and for other folks to get back on their feet. We have been adding staff, we've been adding positions in both the Fire Department, the Police Department, without trying to do an override, while also doing major projects, a hundred million dollars worth of projects for water, for searing. So you're right, I mean, there are lots of, i- i- if we had endless funds, we'd be adding tons of folks to DPW and, and different, you know, apparatus that they need. And we would be able to fill out fully, you know, all the positions that we need. But obviously, just like when you sit down at, at, you know, your house and think about competing needs, you know, are you gonna do, you're gonna, you know, fix your roof, or you're gonna, you know, have money away for an emergency when your, you know, your, your hot water heater goes? I mean, we're trying to balance those things. And unfortunately, you know, coming off of a very, the biggest recession, you know, since the Great Depression, it wasn't as if that was over the next year. So I agree, there's a lot of needs, and that's what this board is trying to do, it's what Finance Committee, you know, when they do their due diligence, they've made recommendations, folks, you know, Town Meeting has voted to approve new positions. And it's, it's not an easy thing, and we're trying to be responsible with taxpayer funds. And yes, you could, you could ask for, you know, an override every year, it's not appropriate to do so. We're trying to staff within the budget, but this is a very particular situation. Public safety of this nature, being this short-staffed, and with the contract change really impacting the way that we can provide our services, this, we believe as a board that this is the time that is appropriate for an override. So I don't disagree with you, there are lots of things that need to- don't disagree with you. There are lots of things that need to be changed.
And again, I don't dispute what you said, but, I mean, this issue didn't come up, whatever, two and a half months ago when we first heard about it. It's been going on for a long time, and the same thing with the Police Department, and again, the same thing with the DPW.
And that's why we've...
We've managed ourselves into quite a position, and it's going to take quite a lot to get out of it.
And that's why it's nine new positions over five years for fire, and it's not enough. And that's why we have to try to do this.
Now, of those nine, those weren't all new. Were there, weren't they replacements for retired and such? Wasn't it like actually four new and five replacement?
The chief, I don't want to speak out of school.
They were newly funded positions. The funds were not in the budget previously at any time. I know the chief can confirm that.
It doesn't relate to retirements or anything. It was...
Right. Five new funded, excuse me, nine new funded positions.
I think three of them had been approved by Town Meeting in the past that were unfunded, but it's not new bodies.
Yeah.
Nothing to do with retirements.
Right. Great. Thank you. Doug, did you have, did I skip?
No, that was good.
Okay, then Sam.
Lori Hallihawks, I just want to, you don't have to leave these now, but I just think you should have that information.
Okay.
There were two things that kind of jumped out at me, and one of them was when the chief was talking about Woods Hole with an ambulance down there, which I think is wonderful. They're finally getting apparatus. When you read through that, it's one of the most underfunded departments that I think we've been neglecting for a long time. And I'm glad to see that they're getting support and hopefully more support through Town Meeting.
Excuse me.
Woods Hole has a volunteer, if I heard correctly, and they're there eighty percent of the time, more of the people. So an ambulance can't go out without two. So twenty percent of the time, roughly, that ambulance can't leave that's down in Woods Hole now, if the volunteer...
It can't leave ever, most of the time, right?
That was under the old, the old regulations, they could leave one.
No, not in an ambulance. So all that could go out of Woods Hole...
Right. But I'm just saying, I understand. There is no station that can have one man on any apparatus now, through the union contract, which is the safest thing. I can't believe it took that long.
On July one, yeah.
But twenty, you're saying we now have a volunteer and a permanent. We have a permanent and a volunteer in Woods Hole? Am I correct? Did I hear that wrong?
No, we, it's vol, I don't want to misspeak. So, no, I think what has been happening is that that station has been staffed with one person through voluntary overtime.
Okay.
So in other words...
Only eighty percent of the time?
Yes.
Am I correct? Because I read that in the report as well. I just want to, I want to, I don't say something and retract it. I want it to be a fact, because we were told it was safe.
So sometimes there has been, you know, when, if this, if everybody comes to work, we've had an extra person that has gone to Woods Hole. So that was about, but prior to the voluntary overtime, about fifty percent of the time, it was a one-person station, ambulance out of service.
Yeah.
The other fifty percent of the time, it was a two-person station, ambulance in service. We also, through a very complex, unworkable system of recall, would put that ambulance in and out of service eight times a day. It was a disaster. The dispatch was a disaster. So now, with the voluntary person on the voluntary, either ten-hour day, fourteen-hour night, twenty-four-hour shift, that station has been staffed with two people about eighty percent of the time. Is that it?
Yeah, that is. So, yeah, so actually, twenty percent of the time, the ambulance can't go out. Okay. That's what I wanted to make clear. And then, the next thing that I wanted to get complete...
That's going to change on July first.
July first.
And it'll be two people full-time.
They're going to take a permanent man. There will not be a volunteer man there anymore. That'll be the permanent man.
So that ambulance can always be...
That'll probably be the West Falmouth guy. I'm just using that. I don't know which guy it will be, but the one man that's in West Falmouth now, which is a permanent guy, will go somewhere. So we have two. And then, West Falmouth will be, both will be volunteer.
And that's assuming that the operating budget gets approved by Town Meeting.
Right. So, yes, because overtime is very expensive. The next thing is, I was glad to see the grant being applied for, so we know the chief can apply for grants. And I think we really should start looking at the safer grant now. From what I understand, and I might be incorrect, if you apply for the safer grant, your guys at the Academy move up. They're the first in line, if it's through a safer grant. So if we apply for a safer grant, they're first in line. And am I wrong, chief? I'm not sure. You might know that. If you've applied for the safer grant, you would probably know.
It is my understanding that the Mass Fire Academy, the Mass Fire Training Council amended their bylaws recently to give preference to communities that are hiring people off of safer grants, because the safer grant has a window. I vehemently disagree with that. I've expressed my disagreement to them in the form of a, mainly phone calls and a letter, but that is the case. They are, they are holding available slots for towns that have pursued staffing through safer grants.
Right. And I just want to be clear just about the safer grant piece of it, is that it would be unlikely that in year four, is it year four that it's...
Three and four.
Three and four. That our budget without an override could absorb eight. That's the problem. I mean, the safer grant...
We don't have to do all eight this time. I mean, we could get two or three with safer grant. But we have never even applied for it.
Right. But it just...
And we have left one point five million dollars on the table every time. So I really think that needs to be looked into, whether, you know, again, the chief and you people can speak, but as taxpayers, I find it very disturbing that we have left that much money on the table, year after year after year after year.
Except it's not sustainable.
Well, you only get it for three.
I totally understand. I read the whole, the whole grant. But that's what it's supposed to do. It's supposed to help you budget. So we're not looking at a two and a half override for eight men, or ten men, or twelve men. You are now able to slowly, if we have been doing this for the last few years, or the last five years, we would slowly have been building up our resources. This Fire Department's been understaffed for years. So I just really think that the safer grant should be looked at very closely, and I, tomorrow night, I'm going to ask why, because I have not got that answer, why we could not apply for the safer grant and a proposition, with the proposition tomorrow.
And we can, I think we've...
That, we tomorrow night.
Probably should have that on our next agenda.
Well, it is, we've discussed that already, but we can talk about it again tomorrow night. We had that, that was discussed at the public forum. If you apply for the safer grant, you can't apply for safer if you already have the money budgeted. So if we get the...
There's a document that says that. I couldn't find it.
Okay. So if we can, sure, we can get that.
Madam Chair, can I clarify one thing on, I know the board was just given a sheet of paper that compared, purported to compare three communities' fire departments, Barnstable, Yarmouth, and Falmouth. I just want to advise the board, or confirm to the board, Barnstable does not have a municipal fire department. They never have. They have multiple fire districts, so this is apples and oranges. Yarmouth and Falmouth are a legitimate comparison. Barnstable is not a comparison. They do not have a municipal fire department.
Okay. Yep, Sam.
Yeah, I, I think the thing we're forgetting is that this town has a lot of other needs. You're talking about trying to find extra money in a budget year and year after year. It's not there. We have huge demands on the environmental remediation side. Those are coming up. They're not going away. We can't just say, you know, oh, we should be able to scratch together enough to put out two more positions if we don't pass this override. That's really naive. This town has a lot of needs that have not been fully addressed, and we can't just simply say, it's going to be there in three years. I don't believe that. I do not believe that there will be sufficient funds to staff the level, staff the Fire Department at the level that we'd like it to be at, to provide equitable service around the town. Now, by the way, I'll also say, we live in a darn nice town. I mean, this town is not shabby. And so, some of the comments about we should have seen this coming a long time ago, yeah, well, it was new to me that all of a sudden, we were going to have to have two people at the West Falmouth Station. But I think if you look at the quality of life that we enjoy, we ought to be counting our blessings.
Any other questions or comments? I know we have another event tomorrow night with some more detailed questions, but we can see if we can get you that. That's one of the questions I think Finance Committee also had, so we can look for that sort of specific language. And let's, Peter, did you, did I miss you? Were you freezing?
No.
Okay.
I'd just like to comment again to the union and the Fire Department for, thank you for negotiating for safety rather than benefits for yourselves. I really appreciate that you're here.
Great. Thank you. Thanks. Appreciate it. Okay. We have, discussion of Emerald House property future uses.
Did we need to vote on that memorandum?
I don't think we need to vote on the memorandum.
It'd be up to you, Madam Chair, if you want to have, consider having a board vote.
The board chair signed that memorandum.
Second.
Oh, is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Peter, are you going to give our...
Yes, I am.
...patient? Okay. Great.
I can log in. So Peter Johnson Staub, Assistant Town Manager. We are here tonight to talk about these two parcels of land, sixty-seven Davisville Road, which has the Emerald House located on it in the northeast corner, and eighty-one Davisville Road, which is immediately to the south. And these are some prime pieces of real estate that are largely undeveloped, and there are a lot of opportunities here. So we want to make sure to sort of go slowly and present the ideas that are being considered, to make sure that we have a long-term, a long-term plan and vision, and what we do in the short term doesn't interfere with what we might want to do in the long term. So as a reminder for the board, this information, I think, is pretty familiar to you. The Emerald House at sixty-seven Davisville Road, that parcel of land is four point nine acres, acquired in nineteen ninety-five for municipal purposes and/or public recreation. It is zoned public use. The Emerald House was built around circa eighteen hundred and is included on the town list of significant buildings. It was sold by the Emerald family to the town. My understanding is at the time, there was a hope and a wish that the town's stewardship of that house would somehow honor the Portuguese farming history of the community. That is not a letter of the law, but that was a discussion at the time. The size of the house is about a thousand square feet. The interior condition is excellent. The exterior is also quite good. It has, at this point, a half kitchen and a half bath. Eighty-one Davisville Road, about just under four acres, acquired two thousand seven for public recreation and municipal purposes, zoned residential A. So the potential uses that have been talked about to this point, for both parcels, speaking generally, one of them is a community garden, and I'll show you more specifically where that might be located. There is a nonprofit in town, as the board may be aware, Farming Falmouth, that is interested in organizing the community garden. I believe they are currently the organizers of the community garden at Tony Andrews Farm. There is a, an inclusive playground, which is being investigated. The board may recall, there was a community preservation grant to fund a feasibility study. Kathleen Haynes is here with us tonight. She is the driving force behind that project, working with Joe Olenek, the Recreation Director, and the Commission on Disabilities. So that is another use, potential use, that is being contemplated for eighty-one Davisville Road. We have no immediate proposal for the significant acreage to the rear or to the west of the proposed playground and the community gardens. And that is, you know, a significant piece of land, and the, you know, the potential uses of that, you may, you know, the board may decide you want to leave it as open space. You might also want to consider affordable housing development for that area. This is an illustration prepared by Dan Celine, who's been working with Joe Olenek and Kathleen Haynes and others on the inclusive playground. They have incorporated into their sort of master plan for the site, the community, potential community garden location. So that's what we're looking at here. You can see the Emerald House property is in this northeast corner here. The darker green polygon is the Phase One Community Garden, proposed location, and then this gray strip up the middle, a shared access and parking. And the orange area here is what is contemplated to be programmed for an inclusive play, play space. So potential uses, next steps, we, there will be a community meeting to solicit input on the proposed design of the inclusive play space and the community gardens, and that will be presented by, again, Kathleen Haynes, Disability Commission, and the Recreation Director. There will be a complete feasibility study and concept plan to be developed for the inclusive play space. And then, there will need to be a Selectman public hearing for this proposed use. The, we have a bylaw, I think it's section two oh seven, that says when there's a new proposed use for municipal purposes, the Board of Selectmen has to hold a hearing before taking action on that new use. So that hearing will be coming back to the Board of Selectmen. And then, if the decision of the board is to proceed with the community garden, the way we would envision doing that is with a license agreement with Farm Falmouth, which allows some, you know, it allows to make a commitment to the, to the Farm Falmouth and to the community garden, but it also provides some flexibility that it's, you don't have to go through a procurement process. And if some new big issue arises and there's a need to, to adjust, you know, the uses of the property, a license agreement allows for that. So in speaking with Town Council Frank Duffy, that seems to be the best method to proceed, if the board does choose to proceed with the community garden. And then finally, again, if, if there is consensus around these proposals, there would be additional funding required and grants submitted to, through the Community Preservation Committee. That would, funds would be needed for both the community garden and for the play space.
Do you have slides of the initial draft proposed?
For the play space?
Or for both?
No, this, you know, what we wanted to do tonight is a high-level discussion, and there's, you know, they're still working on the feasibility study and the preliminary planning. We have some staff vetting to do with those plans for the play space. The community gardens are, you know, we don't, I don't know that we're going to have, you know, it's, it's a garden. We want, we need to know where it's going to go, and then that's, you know, then, then we're ready to proceed essentially. So I don't know that there are going to be, you know, more elaborate plans or drawings, although...
See, Mr. Pooley did submit a preliminary sketch.
You're right. I stand corrected. So I guess they do have some, some idea about where the individual plots might go, right? But I don't, I don't have that in front of us today.
But this is a land-use concept.
Exactly. The focus tonight, was, the intent of the focus tonight was the higher level, you know, what do you think about putting, you know, these activities in the various spaces that they're being contemplated? So it's this, it's this broad strokes that we're looking for your feedback on. And then, you know, if it looks like this is something that the board is interested in pursuing, we will further develop it and come back with more specifics.
Okay. Well, having been more familiar with the playground, I think it's a really good idea, and it takes good advantage of the flat part of that lot. When you get to the end of the red section, it's a pretty steep drop-off, a little more difficult to develop back there. So I think it's a very sensible use, and I think that eventually, behind the playground, could be some nice walking trails. I know Mr. Staub mentioned that we could consider affordable housing. I don't think that would work with both. So what would we do? Have to access from the back from Green Pond Road?
So the, the access, like, Green Pond is a private road, so that may be challenging to get approval for, for access from Green Pond. The possible access would be through this, the shared access parking. That could be the, that could be the driveway. That's one thought. Another thought, which the town planner, Tom Bott, had suggested would be preferred to minimize curb cuts and disruption of traffic flow along Davisville Road, would be to, to enter through what is now essentially the driveway to the Emerald House, to widen that and come up the northern border of the, of the property line. And then, there would need to be a, a cutover from some point from the northern border to get down to the playground. So those, those are the kinds of things that if the board is, again, is interested in all of the above, so the playground, the community gardens, and affordable housing, we're going to want to, you know, to do some, take a good hard look and probably go to Planning Board for a site plan review in terms of what is the best way to access the property.
Can I, oh, go ahead.
Just follow up with the playground lot. I think that takes half of the four acres on that one lot. Is that correct?
So let's, it's, it's really... It's, it's really, I, I don't believe it takes up as much as half. It's, well, it's one point three acres, I believe. Kathleen, does that, does that ring a bell? The last I heard, the place...
It was originally one point five, and because of the spacing with the parking, it's like one point six right now.
Has it creeped up to one seven?
Yeah.
Point six.
Cause you're, I think the parking, the parking encroaches on the Emerald lot, I believe, right? That shared parking?
Yeah.
It's hard to tell with the two different...
So this, this is, this shows the, the border of the two parcels in this gray dashed line. So it actually is, you're, you're right. The, the parking is, actually, you're absolutely right, is on the northern side, so it is encroaching on, on the sixty-seven Davisville. So again, but it, you know, looking at the, the math, you've got, you've got four point nine acres and three point nine acres, and the, the place, the playground, including the parking, is taking up one point six. So that leaves you a good chunk of land to the west.
Well, I don't, I'd be interested in exploring that then. If you think, if the planner thinks it's feasible, then we should start to look for these opportunities.
And it's, you know, you know how affordable housing is. It's not, it's very complicated and it takes a lot of work, so it's not something that's going to happen overnight. But, you know, that's, that's the kind of feedback we're looking for tonight. If there's interest in exploring it, then we'll do more due diligence on it and see if we can move that forward.
Can you go back to the one where you were talking about the uses for the building? I think you had a slide that said...
I did. I hadn't got that far, yes. And I didn't know, I was, I wasn't sure if it would be better to talk big picture first and then...
Well, I just think, I think it's just nice to get, there, there's been a lot of conversation. I mean, I know that, that your, you know, Town Manager's Office, Board of Selectmen, Rec, Disability, I mean, there's been a lot of conversations about what could happen, lots of different activities proposed for this particular parcel. I, I know, I've sort of raised the issue, the Cape Verdean, you know, cultural society's looking to have a museum, and so would this be a temporary, would the Emerald House itself be a temporary home for, you know, they have a lot of different material that they've been gathering, would that be a place that could be a temporary home for that society? Or, you know, how else can we utilize this house? This home right now is not really being utilized, and that's, you know, unfortunately, it's, that's, you just want, you want bodies, you want people in buildings so that they can be taken care of and looked at.
But I, I agree with Doug Brown. I like the idea of, of approving the concept for the land first before we go into the discussion about the building. I think they really are very two separate conversations. And I do like the idea of the garden, the play space, with a potential for affordable housing. So I think that's what you're looking for, is how do we feel about those concepts? And then I think a further discussion about the building would be necessary.
Yeah. I mean, the, the walking trails behind the play space is a nice idea, but we do have a lot of walking trails in town, and if it's practical and feasible to put some affordable housing in there, it's probably a good idea.
At least not shut off that possibility because of what we do in the front part of it.
Right, right. And that's, that's the key, is we wanted to make sure that we situate the gardens and the play space in such a way that if, if you even want to think about it as a future use, that we have a, a plan to allow for access somehow.
I see Mr. Kendall here. Did you want to speak to any of this tonight, or?
Well, I would be pleased to, when the town's really in support of, of what she's proposing. Mine, well, I'll make my turn.
Okay.
I think about two minutes.
Great.
But mostly to complement you, both your process.
Thank you.
Can I ask, ask a question about sewer access? If we were to put affordable housing in there? Is the expansion of the sewer system likely to take in?
I would defer to the Town Manager on that.
No, not in any reasonable timeframe. We do not expect sewer to be in that area.
So, so this next phase that the Water Quality Management Committee is looking at would not include this area?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
And not yet determined phase. Phase two would be Shorewood and Acropescut.
Yeah.
And then the rest is yet to be planned.
Right. So it's just, you know, it's a, it's a nitrogen source that you're going to add to this area.
True.
And that, that's an issue that we can't just neglect.
Right.
So I guess I would make a motion to support the plan put forward with the idea of keeping affordable housing as a possibility in that backlog, just to give you a sense of the board.
I would second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the, the Emerald House itself, the structure, the, the use, potential uses are limited by zoning. Housing is allowed under public use zoning. Agriculture, philanthropic uses, a museum, municipal uses are among the, the likely uses that are allowed by right. Unfortunately, professional offices and retail is not permitted. So, and there is, there is no provision in our current zoning bylaws for a use variance. So if it's not allowed by right or by special permit, it's really not, not doable. The only other potential you could look at would be a zoning change, and that's also problematic because to the north of, of the Emerald House parcel is the school, which is also zoned public use, and everything else around it is residential. So it's tough to make a case for business zoning.
And why would you want to anyway? Next to a school and residential?
And it's a fairly limited space, but I know people have thought about some office space and things like that.
Right. I mean, I guess the, the answer to your question is if we couldn't find a nonprofit that was well-suited to use it, a professional office in terms of the physical structure might work, but it's really not going to, not going to fit for zoning. The other, you know, the only other potential use of the Emerald House itself would be as affordable housing. I know this was mentioned a year ago when we talked about it. It didn't sound like there was a lot of enthusiasm for, from the board for that option. It could be done with a deed restriction for historic preservation and a deed restriction for affordable housing. It would require some, although the interior's in good shape, it's not in good shape for residential purposes. It would, you know, it would need some bathroom and kitchen improvements.
A bathroom, a full bathroom, right.
Yes. A full bathroom would be needed. So I'm not necessarily advocating affordable housing for the structure, but we just, again, and in terms of how we think about the, the use of the, the uses of these two parcels and the access to the rear of the parcel, it does come into play because if you, there are a couple of different ways you could pursue affordable housing with the existing structure. If you were to sell, the, sell the house as a, you could sell the house and not the land. If you wanted to sell the, the house and the land, then you'd need to carve out an acre site, and that would present some challenges.
And I think it really runs up against, you know, why the town really acquired that property, right? I mean, there's a, there's a value there of the public, for whatever's in there, having access to that building, even when it was, you know, the, the Emerald House, the thrift store. I mean, you still were able to go into it, you can, I think there's an argument to me that you're, the public is still having access to that feel of that history, and, you know, shutting that off completely and making it a private residence really takes away from that component. And in some ways, if we look at that, that sketch that you had, you know, you can kind of really envision that piece of property being used for so many different things that I think really speaks to why the town acquired it, right? So that farming history, and you have that there, really, you know, this, the Emerald family had a huge part to play in our community, and you have this, this area for children and for families, and then you have the Emerald House itself that you could potentially, whatever ends up going in there, something that the public can go in and, and see the property and whatever else they see in there, whether it's another nonprofit or a museum or whatever else it might be.
Exactly. I'd like to see some pictures of strawberry farming and, you know, restroom access for the people using the community garden. I've heard a lot of good comments from East Falmouth residents about the community garden idea, so I think that that would be the primary mission of that property, and then the barn and the structure could kind of support that little community center.
Thank you for mentioning the farming connection, because that was an important part of, of this design and putting the gardens.
Next to it.
It works really well because that happens to be the land that's cleared to put the, particularly the Phase One garden is the land that's going to be most readily accessible for, for cultivation, and it's also in close proximity to the house, which really honors that history.
I don't know, I just see that there can be a lot of connectivity between, if the folks of Farming Falmouth who are, you know, doing work with Tony Andrews Farm, you know, really connecting both the Portuguese and Cape Verdean farming traditions in our community, and this has that potential, I think, to kind of have that crossover. The town has acquired these two properties, and there's potential for continuing both of those really important traditions at both Tony Andrews Farm and, or Andrews Farm, and here at the Emerald House. So it's a nice opportunity, I think.
Great. So, back to the, back to the structure, we, in terms of next steps, we, if we're going to find an occupant for the Emerald House, we'll need to issue a request for proposals. The board has a lot of flexibility. The procurement law allows the, the board to set parameters. It ha, it does have to be competitive, but you can, you can be very narrow in your focus or you can be very broad in your focus in terms of what entities and uses you would entertain as applicants for a lease of that structure. So I'd love to get your feedback now or at a future meeting as to whether you want to, you know, if, it sounds, again, I think, you know, maybe, maybe a vote to confirm, but it sounds, again, that the board's going to say housing's not what we're interested in here, which is, that's great, that's helpful to know. Do you want to then just say any philanthropic museum use would be...
I don't know. I mean, I'll, I'll just speak for myself. I would like to see an RFP that is narrow enough that we're talking about something connected directly to Falmouth. So sure, you know, I'll just use United Way. What a great organization, but what connection does that have to Falmouth? So a nonprofit that has some connection to sort of Falmouth or the history of, again, I, I would say, you know, I mean, I don't want to be too biased, but Portuguese or Cape Verdean. I mean, that, this house was, that, that's part of the Portuguese community, and that's part of why we acquired it, to really tell the story.
See, I would love for it to be a building that was both supporting past farming and future farming.
Right.
So if it was space that Farming Falmouth needed, but was also going to create a, a museum version of what farming has been in Falmouth through the Cape Verdean and through the Portuguese community as its history, but also being the community farming right there, it may be useful for them to have some space, and I think that...
And, and we, this, this is great feedback, because we can put in criteria that, you know, that express a preference for supporting the activities that are planned for the parcel, such as agriculture. Another criteria for a Falmouth connection. And, and then I guess the, you know, the other question which ultimately may come to, to pass is how important is it to have the lessee contribute either rent or maintenance to offset the town's cost in maintaining the property?
Can you remind us? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think the maintenance is important because that encourages good stewardship of the property.
And can you just remind us, if you know, and if you don't, it's okay, but under the last lease that we had, what, do you, do you remember what the provisions were for...
Yeah, roughly, and I apologize, I don't have the details. What I can tell you is there was a, there was a contribution that was based on a percent of profit that went to actually a, a nonprofit, which was really interesting. I've never seen that before. So it didn't go to the town, it went to a nonprofit. And then there was also a minimum contribution to a maintenance fund.
Okay.
In addition to that.
Sam?
I just want to recommend to everybody to read the article that Dick Kendall wrote about the Emerald House, and it was published in a periodical, the Scripps magazine that came out, you know, on a quarterly or semi-annual basis. But it's an excellent recording of the history of the Emerald family over that generation when they were there active in strawberry farming and the entrepreneurial, entrepreneurship they showed in marketing their products all the way up into Maine. It's an excellent article, and I really recommend that people read it, and it really just fits into the whole idea of turning it into a, a museum that recognizes the contributions of the Portuguese-American immigrants that came here and settled this area. So I, you know, it, it, there's, there's a nice already basis, if we will, to start populating that museum.
Museum, yeah.
With some pictures also that were included in that article.
And there, there are a lot of pictures, and it's a great point, Sam, and there are a lot of pictures out there. Lou White has, I mean, he has a hu, you know, he has his own little museum, that he's looking for a place to put lots of pictures of folks from this, from the community and great farming pictures. McGowanese, who's done some presentations, same thing, has great historical pictures of farming, you know, here in the community, and, and then again, the Cape Verdean group has pictures and, and things that they've been gathering for a museum. So there's definitely a wealth of, of material out there that you could have in a place if you had the right kind of organization to put it together. But I love your idea, Doug, of having it be something that's not just kind of static looking back, but also connected to what we're trying to do going forward on that parcel. So maybe you can take a stab at it.
No, you've given me great feedback. This is exactly what I was hoping for. Thank you.
I think the next thing, though, is to get the site planning squared away to decide how much we want to offer.
Right.
To that group.
Right. And where we want the access to be and how that might affect the, the play space and the gardens.
The use of the, yeah.
Yeah.
And how much room we need for swings at the back of that playground.
Kathleen, did you want to come?
Yeah.
You have to come up, unfortunately, so...
Yeah, it's all right.
Let's just move.
Give her this one.
Here, Kathleen, you want to, are you able to hold this?
Yeah, let me hold this side.
Great, thank you.
I like, yeah, I, I like the ideas of the affordable housing.
So.
Oh, I'm Kathleen Haynes. I'm not even sure what precincts. I'm all over Falmouth. I'm Wonder. Yeah, I like the idea of the affordable housing. I, I want you guys to remember that that land does dive severely after the play space, which is why the final plan does not call for the swings in that area at all. The swings are being accommodated within the play space. I guess my biggest concern is I'm hearing all this, and I have a document that says the play space has an agreement with the selectmen to use that property for the playground. So I'm like nervous because I'm hearing all this, well, we'll put affordable housing, maybe this, maybe that. And I want to, I, we have put so much work, and Dan Celine is a talented landscape architect who has put together a plan that is second to none. The landscape designer, playground designer is about in the process of the final designs to give to Dan for us to have a PowerPoint together by the end of this month that we will take to the public, have a public forum, get their opinions. We've been to the DPW, their only concern is on maintenance, and we've talked to Peter McConaughey where a plan might be developed at some point that would allow for one person to cover the small parks. But little things have been talked about. We haven't left much to be just figured out. It's all been a process of figuring it all out. And we have also, and I, as president of the Falmouth Community Play Space, have talked to my people and different people in town about renting the Emerald House as a meeting place for nonprofits. And also because of the extensiveness of the cost to put in that play space, we would like to, at some point, be able to have security cameras there. And Emerald House would be the perfect place to house the security equipment, because with the problems that are on in town, we don't want to subject any child, any adult, anybody to anything that might be illegal in that park. And a fence doesn't always keep people out. So we have that concern, and we are halfway to financing our own nonprofit status, but right now we are under Falmouth, together we can, so we do have nonprofit status under them. And we'd be willing to take care of the maintenance. We just asked for minimal rent, and we'd take care of it. And it would be kept in the way it is, we would take care of it, but other groups could meet there. The rooms aren't very big. In order to make a museum, you'd really have to take walls down. It's, what, a thousand square feet? So we're, we have been thinking forward on this since day one. I already have numbers going to be coming from Dan Dufour, who is the playground designer, and Dan Celine to be able to put together the next grant for August, which will go as far as looking at construction costs. I know I have to come back to you guys and get permission, have to have a public hearing, the whole nine yards, but we are preparing all those steps now. We're not waiting till August fifteenth or whatever. I mean, we got put in a position with the land that we didn't know till, like, October fifteenth that we even had the property and had to have the proposal into the CPC on November sixth. that we even had the property and had to have the proposal into the CPC on November sixth. And we've accomplished all that. And it's been, just a few of us have really busted our tails to get this going, and to keep it going. And Joe DeFour told me last week that once this proposal is completed and the design is completed, this will be the biggest inclusive playground in Massachusetts. And it will be a destination playground. And this is what a few of us have been trying to do, to give Falmouth the best. And not only the best playground, but the best inclusive, multi-generational playground there is. So I just want you guys to think about that when you think about what your plans are for the property. Do you want to put a housing development right at the gates of the PlaySpace? Things like that. Dan has made the curve cuts, he's made a, we have talked to the DPW, can we put a sidewalk, rest from the Davisville to the PlaySpace? Because it only goes as far as the school. So there's all these contingencies being worked out behind the scenes that we want you all to be aware of. And we will present all this when BTT is done, we've done the community forum. We're gonna run a big thing in the enterprise with pictures, with graphics, so that people can see these before they come to the community forum with informed decisions and questions. Not just come to a forum where we're gonna show slides, and gee, you know, what do you got to say about it? We want informed decisions and informed questions. And that is only, I would say, a month away. So that's my spiel.
Great, thank you.
So I just wanna be sure you understand that we're not talking about housing instead of the PlaySpace, but in addition to the PlaySpace.
Well, I hope that's what I'm hearing.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think there's any suggestion that there would be a change in not having the PlaySpace.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. My name is Richard Kendall, I live in Precinct Four. The, when the Emerald House Committee was set up by this group here, and we started off, and I think we, as we progressed, we became more and more concerned that our real mission was to leave a legacy behind that showed what agriculture meant to this community when it was a basic income source for many of the families who were here, and the people who came to our shores to do the farming. And we tried to do that, we got a grant from the Mass Department of Environmental Management that you folks wrote, that gave us the money to give a handout to people who came in. So we were trying to get, how do we communicate? If we could get somebody in the building that would have foot traffic to take our materials, we were, we were accomplishing part of what we wanted to do. But I think you have to, whatever happens there, there needs to be a lot of thought given to, how do we tell this generation, future generations, what the farming industry was in Falmouth, and what are we gonna do when we have, don't have enough of it? And that's what I think that her proposal calls for. Patches where the school kids can have their own strawberry patches. Educating with the value of farmland. If there's another message we would send out, it is exactly that. Who did the work, and how valuable was the farmland? I think a lasting, whether it's a brochure, certainly with the pictures, certainly with the pictures. I think the most beautiful example of capturing what happened back in a century ago, a hundred years anyway, is in the stained glass windows in St. Patrick's Church, St. Anthony's Church. When you go in and you see the stained glass window, and you've got those folks on their hands and knees, and they're picking, and they're working hard, and it'll be there forever. We, maybe, none of us are gonna be, well, maybe some of you might be, but I probably won't be here forever. But you leave behind something that the next generation and the generation after that can appreciate. So whoever does anything with the land or the property, as long as we have a mission statement that says, tell future generations how hard it was to live, who came here, who farmed the land, how important growing, how important agriculture is, and credit to those people who did. When we were really the capital, California and Cape Cod were the capital of strawberry growing in the United States. It's a great history, something to be very proud of. And every school kid can be proud of it. But thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Just enjoying those stained glass windows this morning.
Yes, beautiful. Took a lot for them to build that church, because a lot of strawberries that had to be picked, because they built that, they literally funded that and built that themselves, so.
Kenny would be happy.
Yeah, that's right. Great, thank you. So do you have everything from us that, okay?
Do you wanna hear from Mr. Pooley about the garden idea?
Sure, yeah, yep. Do you wanna come on up and just?
Sure.
My name is Dick Pooley.
Welcome.
East Falmouth resident for four years on now, but vacationing here for the last forty years. I tried to get a community garden plot three years ago at the Falmouth Service Center, and they were full. Two years ago, I got one, and then two weeks later, I got notice that there was gonna be no more garden. So that, late that summer, I started working with the Agricultural Commission, Farming Falmouth, and a group of ten volunteers, and put together a working group, and went after a space for a new garden. And we moved the Falmouth Service Center garden out to Andrews Farm, and we had about sixty percent occupancy last, last year. We did that on a shoestring. We moved the fence with the AmeriCorps, installed the fence with the Sheriff's Department, paid a contractor to do the underground work for the irrigation system. But we got about sixty percent occupancy this year. We're a hundred percent occupied. So we're looking for more space. This would be a perfect place for it. Our idea, Farming Falmouth's idea, is to marry the inclusive aspect of the PlaySpace with the garden, and to include raised beds that are wheelchair accessible, some pathways that are inclusive, you know, stone dust rather than wood chips. But that's the idea.
Wonderful, thank you.
I think we're looking for about a half acre is what we, we have. Just about a third of an acre out at Andrews Farm. We would need wider pathways here for the inclusive aspect, but that's our idea.
How many plots, oh, I'm sorry, how many plots do you have at Andrews Farm?
We have sixty-five plots.
Okay, on the half acre?
That's about a third of an acre.
A third of an acre, okay.
Yeah, it's one forty by one, one, one forty by one twenty.
So is the half acre the first phase, or is that both phases?
Well, I never got into the first phase, second phase. I think that was an idea proposed by the playground people. But we're primarily looking for the open space, so we don't have to do a lot, a lot of clearing. There are some trees that would need to come down. But we had Jeff Andrews look at it, and what he would have to do for the soil tilling. And we would need a fence, and we would need irrigation, but those are major costs associated with getting the garden up and running.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from Mr. Pooley?
No, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Great, thank you, Peter. So we'll just wait for you to bring some other stuff back to us.
Next step will be the RFP.
And also having, getting some feedback about the, the potential layout if we're gonna try to accommodate some of those things.
Right, right, sorry, yeah. Next step on the Emerald House structures and RFP, next step on the master plan is to really take a hard look at access to the rear for affordable housing, and what's the best way to do that?
Great, thank you. Okay. Presentation of playground design for Fuller Field.
And you're stuck with me again.
Okay, I just see all these other people that could be stuck, but, all right.
And they're coming too. So I, I just wanted to say a few introductory remarks. So we, this topic is to address the construction of a new playground at Fuller Field, and this, as the board is well aware, is to replace the playground that was displaced where we now have a lovely senior center. So the, I have been working with the Recreation Director, Acting DPW Director Peter McConady, and we have retained a playground consultant, Nancy White, who is a, has a perfect history to assist us with this, in that she is a certified playground instructor. She has experience with the, the sale of playground equipment from the retailer's side, and she is also a former Recreation Director, also local to the Cape. So to date, we have, this, the project team drafted some designs, and then we brought those design plans to the Recreation Committee and the Disability Commission. And both of those groups commented favorably on the design plan that we have. We have a budget of three hundred thousand dollars that we're working with. That's an allocation from within the senior center construction project, and was part of the, you know, the initial plan when that budget was put together and brought to town meeting. Our next steps after tonight, and getting the Board of Selectmen's input, is to finalize the design, and then go to procurement and construction. And if things miraculously fall in place perfectly, we would hope to have this constructed by July one. And there are some challenges with that, which we can get to later.
But that would be so key for the camp.
It would really be ideal. It would, it would really help Joe out a lot. It would reduce his blood pressure.
And the parent, and the blood pressure of parents whose kids go to the camp, you want them tired at the end of the day, so, yes.
So with that, let me introduce Nancy White.
Welcome.
This playground's gonna be a lot easier than the one you just heard.
Hope it's not too easy. You gonna have some inclusive activities there?
Everything is, a hundred percent.
Oh, okay.
Hundred percent. Okay, whatever you wanna do.
The only thing we had to discuss is...
Yeah. My name is Nancy White. I've gone through all the different processes that you can with park administration, so...
Kinda buried back there. Did I just bury you? I'm sorry.
Not me, yeah. So I, I just wanna go through very quickly what it is that was done. When I was retained, it was to try to drive, drive a bus and get everybody going. So there's a small group of people doing what needs to be done in the way of recognizing maintenance issues for the DPW, recognizing the play value for the larger population overall, recognizing what Joe needs for his programs, and recognizing that the Commodores are there, and the focus of Canty itself. And so with a, to some extent, a limited budget, it's how do you, how do you bring that all together? And so the thought was that there will be activities for two to five and five to twelve. It'll be a hundred percent handicap accessible. All the events would be accessible for everybody. As I mentioned, I think the best way of explaining it is having people think that it's always a child with a disability, and often it's the parent that has a disability and wants to play with a child, and this is the first time they're doing it. So we have some custom items that are gonna be there. The two to five structure has about, I don't remember how many events, but ten or twelve events, and it is in the shape of a boat. There'll be a custom panel on there, because what I'm looking to do is to have it as a photo op for people that are coming to, to visit the Cape, and they wanna take their picture right there at that playground. There's a net climber for five to twelve.
That's the next slide, if you wanna talk about the equipment.
Yeah, I mean, well, I can.
Peter, pull that mic around a bit, too.
Oh, yeah, there it is. So you see a two to five structure, five to twelve. The most important thing, when I'm looking at playgrounds today versus forty years ago when I started, is for them to be totally see-through. They have to be. And you have a very large piece of property there, and you're going to have a large group of people in the summer with a large variety of ages of kids. And the parents are gonna wanna watch a game, and they can't necessarily be every place at once. So with that being the case, it's very wide open. The colors are very soft, so they'll blend in and not be loud for you to, to, you know, come down and look that something's very bright. There is something for all children. There are things so kids can fail, so they can grow into what it is that they want. Instead of doing large composite pieces, there's more independent pieces, because half the time is the going from one thing to another. And that's where a lot of the exercise comes with, with the kids. You're used to a merry-go-round, this one is right at grade, so wheelchairs can go right on it. That's an event that children and able-bodied and disabled, that's not an event that they're usually able to participate in together. There is a specific swing, that's a net swing. That's not only handicap accessible, but it's for sensory issues, it's great. A whole family can be on it, or one child, or Peter's whole family. It doesn't matter, but it will open up the ability to use swings more, because the other swings are two, four, six. There are six swings plus this net swing. To me, with knowing Falmouth, and, and years ago doing a lot of work in the town, it's important for me to look at not just this piece, it's looking at how it's going to be in the experience. It's the whole experience of pulling in and parking, and where you're going, and what you're looking at. So it, it, I wanted to make sure there was enough challenge, but I also wanted to make sure that we had the gross motor and the fine motor, and a lot of sensory situations for kids, intergenerational play, parallel play, pretty much everything. But not something that you would come to, to spend the entire day, because you have a limited budget. And I would love to see people here in the morning, then go to the beach, or go to the beach and come here in the afternoon. Because of the size that you have, it will have a variety of turnovers all the time. It won't be something that someone comes here and says, okay, we're gonna spend, spend six hours. Eastham, just for your own benefit, has one of those, right behind the Town Hall. It's not something you stay at, but there's plenty to do if you stay for a few hours. Working with the three or four guys that I'm working with is just, everybody's communicating. When Peter got ahold of me, he said, we've gotta get this in really fast. And so we're moving as fast as we can. And I'm driving the bus as fast as I can, you know, within the speed limit that we can go. So we're juggling with a bunch of different things, but I'm psyched. I'm really excited to see something that's not overbearing, that takes all, everything into consideration of what you've got there. There will be handicapped parking spaces there, one for a van, one for a car, which is by law what you need. And it will meet all of the national regulations for ADA, or... But it will, it'll be perfect for where it is.
How big is it, Nancy? Like, what's the footprint?
By a little five thousand two hundred and fifty. They, the, the space that was available was huge. But like everything, your space, what you want and the money don't match. So it was trying to find, if you spend all your money on equipment, then you don't necessarily get what you want with surfacing. If you spend all your money with surfacing, then you're not gonna have anything at all. So some of the ancillary things that could come after, shade, benches, picnic table, it's just not there. It's trying to get the, the meat, what it is. And with that interest, people are gonna say, well, we need to have shade. Well, you know, we need to, we can't, you know, we, we wanna sit. There's, there'll be ways that that will happen. Right now, it's getting this, getting it in the ground and having it for the summer, for Joe, and for, you know, overall, especially with the Commodores. So.
I'm not sure that we placed the playground in terms of locus exactly where it is.
Right.
And also, if you could speak...
Explain the fence.
The grant and the, well, no, the, I was gonna say, the grant and the wood fiber option.
Oh, you want me to do that, okay.
Just overview.
Right. One portion you can see is a straight line, I just want you to be aware of that. It's a straight line. One of the things we were dealing with was the trajectory of the baseballs that are coming out. I got you covered. The trajectory, and so what I did is we changed the angle, so it looks kind of a funky little angle, but that's not necessarily bad. That's a good thing. And the measurements that we last had, Peter, when we were looking, is four hundred and thirty-three feet. Four hundred and thirty-three feet is a good hall. And, and so right now, the plan is for twenty feet high on an eight... And, and so right now, the plan is for 20 feet high on an 80-foot-long area. I don't, I don't see that being, I don't see that being a problem at all. 433 is, is far. And I've worked on a lot of the baseball league that has the, the fields next to it. So it will all be chain-linked in. That one section will be that high. I'd love to see someone that could hit it that far. And we have been.
They'll have to catch them before they get to the place, babe.
What's that?
They'll have to catch them before they get to the place, babe.
They got a long haul between the outfield fence, you're right. And I'm sorry, what was the other thing which was the major thing? Oh, the, the distance.
And.
The material?
The, the grant and the.
Oh, right, right.
Option, option A actually.
The major thing that I heard when I first sat down with the team was no maintenance. You don't have money for maintenance. It's just that's the, the nature of the beast. So of course, poured-in-place rubber, which is probably the best unitary material you can use, is going to have a long life. There's no maintenance. It's very good for head injury criterion, that's what we're looking for. And so that was the thought. And we backed off because financially couldn't do it. So there was a design done that will meet, for the most part, the, the handicap accessibility, but you would still have a lot of that wood fiber that you're used to seeing at a lot of the schools. That will require maintenance. And poured-in-place rubber doesn't like to get married up to wood fiber. So there was the thought of going to the, to the Falmouth River, is that what it is?
Road race.
Right, the road race. And I think that they have been very supportive of trying to offset that remaining that would be needed, which I think is really interesting because it's a road race, which is walking and that's feet, and it's poured-in-place rubber. So I think that that has a nice mix to it. With that money, you've got it. Without that money, you'll have, well, you can see the, the square footage of what would be the poured-in-place. If you were to come back and do it again, to finish it up, it'll be very expensive because of the type of installation it takes to do with the wood fiber and the poured-in-place rubber. So it's one of those, I said it to Peter earlier, strike when the iron is hot. Do it now, stay ahead of the curve to do everything you need to because visually, it's right there in the center, right in the center. So it's, it's a statement for you.
Poured-in-place rubber puts you really way out of budget, right?
It always does. It costs more than equipment, than anything else.
About $60 a square foot?
No, well, no, that's high, not 60. But you've got a lot of, it's a subbase. It's really not the poured-in-place itself, it's all a subbase. Because if something can happen to it, you ever look at it and say, "Well, how did that happen?" No one knows. It's not a three-dimensional piece of material. So there were others. We looked at turf, the playground turf. But to try to stay a little bit in an awkward look, which would be kind of artistic, the poured-in-place seemed to be the best. There, there are four or five different materials out there in this case.
Does that need a concrete perimeter?
No, it's going to be a fold-down. There's going to be fencing. And the fencing posts themselves will be, be installed first. And then the poured-in-place will go behind it a little bit and then fold down to where the grass will meet. So it, it's folding down and it can't really be brought up because the fencing is going to be there. That's saved on the perimeter by having that fencing and the poured-in-place meeting everything with the grass. Little backfill. And trying to make it easy also for weed-whacking.
Yeah.
So they don't weed-whack poured-in-place rubber.
Right. That sounds like a good idea.
Great. Any other questions from the, from the board about this? So what would be, what's the next step that you need from us, Peter? Is it approving?
Yeah, so if, you know, a vote would be great. But if, you know, primarily, we wanted to see, did you have any questions, any concerns? And, and if you had any, we would obviously look to address them. We have hit a couple of the other bases in terms of community input. So this is, you know, pretty much our last stop before going to construction. If I could, I, I don't know how clear we were. You have a, a locust map in front of you, hard copied there. But for the folks at home, the location of the playground is in the far-right corner, abutting right up against the, the newly resurfaced driveway access to Dillingham, which is now a one-way access out to Dillingham. There is a guardrail fence along this access road now. So it's really as far away from the baseball field as we could possibly push it. And it's in the right-field corner. That also has the advantage of fewer home runs going into right field than into center and left. And again, just to clarify, so in the, in the top-right corner here, you see a brown area inside the blue. So if we are not successful in getting a grant and we can't pull a rabbit out of our hat in terms of finding some other economy in the project, which, which seems unlikely, that upper-right-hand corner, all the brown area, would be the wood fiber. And although it's definitely not our first choice, definitely not as good an approach as the full poured-in-place would be, it does get a person on a wheelchair to every element, every piece of equipment in the playground. Everything in the middle, every, you know, under, the, the swing set is probably the best example. The poured-in-place gets you to one of the swings. It doesn't get you to all of the swings.
Would it, I, I'm assuming then, if you're going to, if we have to go with that option, that we're gonna arrange the swings appropriately, right?
It's already set.
Okay. I'm just saying, you know, you're obviously gonna want that one that they get to, to be the accessible. Okay, great. Yep.
And the one thing I want to mention about poured-in-place rubber is.
If you come, come to the mic, please. It's for the, it's for the viewing audience.
I understand. The poured-in-place rubber, based on the square foot, will be much higher. The cost is gonna be much higher per square foot by using both the poured-in-place and the wood fiber.
Now you do have to make a perimeter.
It, the perimeter, but the wood, it has to bevel down 12 to 15 inches for the wood fiber.
To keep it in.
So you're paying a lot more money. It's kind of an awkward situation. Yeah, and it's harder to fill it next time. But you do what you do with the money that you have, and you certainly understand that.
What is, yeah, exactly.
What's that?
What's the number?
So we're, we're refining that, but it looks like it's in the ballpark of $45,000 to $50,000. And I really want to thank Scott Gelfi from the Recreation Committee. He was the one who took the initiative to approach the road race with this concept of funding the cost difference between a partial poured-in-place and full poured-in-place. He did float the idea with them. He's waiting on us to, for a final number, but he said he got a very, he got a good reception when he raised it at the Road Race Committee meeting.
Now, as a contingency in the Senior Center, is that another potential funding source?
Potentially, yes.
Yeah, I think it's important enough that if we, the road race can step forward and that, I hope that we can find someplace to make it happen. I think it's a waste of money in some ways to do all the wood because of the extra money you have to put in. If we can find any way of doing it, I really think, I really want to.
And it creates another headache down the road because it's gonna be always a problem.
Yep.
That's, that's helpful feedback because there's, there's a balance between, we will have a, we will have some money left over at the end of the Senior Center Construction Project. It's nice to have some and leave it there for a couple of years to deal with things that you don't know about until a year or two later. But as you say, this is, this is very much a priority as well. So it's helpful for us to hear the Board's thoughts on that.
And it's really part of the project.
It is, absolutely.
Right, right. Along those lines, I mean, this was absolutely what we negotiated when we talked about this space and we talked to the public and we talked to, you know, folks at Recreation to get everyone sort of on board about this. Because that is probably one of the most-used, even the old one that was lovely but much more humble than this, was probably one of the most-used playgrounds, aside from the school playgrounds for the kids at school. I mean, just all the kids that use it in the summertime. You know, for the rec camp and then for all the games that kids are at. I think, I think in some ways, this location is even better because people can be at the game and their children can, you know, not be behind them, near the road, and can be somewhere where they're, they're, you know, fenced in while the parents are watching a game. So I, you know, I think this is just a really valuable project that's gonna get a lot of use, so.
And I appreciate the idea of keeping some of the contingency for future needs at the Senior Center. But we could also fund those in a different way, too.
Fair.
If the need arises.
Yep.
This is timely.
Potential need.
Right.
But as I think Nancy said, to do it this way and then retroactively do it the other way would be really expensive to do. And we can't come back and do that again, no matter, I mean, it would be a waste of money to do that.
That's correct. Right. We, at, at the outset, we had thought that, that the contingency might go the other way. When we started the construction project, we thought we had maybe some extra money in the playground budget that we might be able to draw from if we needed it. And I, I think the, the owner's project manager and the architect and others, you know, they're just, it's, it's a new world with the accessibility and the, the amount of money that you have to spend now on surfacing to get, you know, a real, ideal, accessible playground. And then, you know, the fence, the 20-foot-high fence was also an, an added cost that most playgrounds don't have.
What's the life expectancy of the poured-in-place, do you know?
The, well, the warranty of the, of somebody? The warranty on the, the, the warranty on the company that will probably be doing it has the strongest warranty in the market, 7/7. Seven years on product and seven years on installation. That's unheard of. How long does it last? A lot of times longer than you want it to. What will, what you will lose over time is the, is the impact attenuation.
Right.
For, because what we're hoping for is, is we're, we're trying to protect the head. And that's what we're trying to do. So because of the heavy use that you'll have, I probably would anticipate coming back to Joe and saying, "We need to do a head drop," in probably three years or so, and see what sort of head impact is going on and making sure that it's hitting the numbers that it needs to hit.
But what's a general life expectancy? There must be a rating.
For poured-in-place rubber, no, only because every town, every place in the country has different sun, has different wind, has different weather. I have done inspections on playgrounds that look perfect and they've been there 20 years. Then I've also done some inspections on poured-in-place rubber that's been in two years. The expectancy is going to be based on the installation. It's the installation that's more important than anything else, extremely boring. But that's when I'm, I'm standing there to make sure it's being done because it's time-sensitive, it's weather-sensitive. And if it's not done in the perfect, perfect world of weather, it will fail. So this, therefore, I'm expecting it to be 10 or 15 years. But the head injury, that's gonna be the one that will make the key. So, but it's, I kind of gave you an answer. There's not a finite, it's like playground equipment. How long does that last? Longer than you want it to. It's like a car. But, you know, you want a new car, but you really don't need one.
I'm just trying to give it some thought to replacement time and cost.
I don't see replacement of the equipment for, you know, 15, 20 years. I think it's going to depend on following the, the time period for the first year. What is the high-impact time? Who's using it? When is it being used? Is it being used during the mornings? And you have to just watch the traffic patterns and see, and that's gonna give you an answer. It'll take about a year to figure that out and say, "Okay, where's, where is there a foible? Is there one or not?" But I don't, I don't want the DPW to have to go down there. That's, that's the goal. You don't want them to because they can't.
No, but eventually, somebody's gonna have to go down there and replace it.
Yeah, but I wouldn't expect it would be, it, it, it's a, everything's a trade-off. It's like the playground's gonna be used in the winter, but it shouldn't be. No playground should be used in the winter. Surfacing is not intended to be.
Because the ground freezes.
Absolutely. But, you know, unless it's above, below 25, the kids are out, you know, in school. So it's a, it's a measuring of where's the best.
So that's gonna be the failure time, is when it's no longer, like, safe?
Well, I think some areas are going to be. I think this is gonna last longer because the intensity is not being thrown in one spot. It's all over the place. And because you have certain age groups using certain things, you have different weights of the kids that are on there. You know, it is a kind of a scientific way of doing it. But I would be interested to do a head drop in three or four years and see if there is anything. But it's the inspect, it's the installation of it that that's gonna create a longer time period. So the company that I would like to see that probably will be used is the one that really is owning up to, yep, seven years on installation, no failures. There are a lot of brand-new playgrounds out there with failures on the, on the surfacing. That costs thousands and thousands, so. It will last much longer than wood fiber. That's one. I'd say 10 or 15 years.
Are we gonna be able to choose that preferred contractor or is this a separate?
Using the state contract, and I was getting different quotes from different companies.
Right, but we'll have to put out an RFP for that piece of it, or no?
Under the state contract, we, there are, there are vendors that you select from. And depending on the particular contract, sometimes you do need to get multiple quotes from the vendors that are on the state contract. I don't know if, you know, off the top of your head, if we, if this is one of the state contracts.
I already did, yeah.
That you do, so, yeah, so we do, we'll get quotes from several. But we, you don't have to choose all of them. If you, you know, you can choose the more reputable ones. So I was gonna suggest a, a path forward because it, I'm hearing that there's strong support for the full poured-in-place rubber. So if the Board were willing to entertain a motion to proceed with full poured-in-place, and that way, if the, if the grant comes through.
Great, but if not.
Great, we move on. Actually, the grant will need to come back to the Board anyway for, for a vote. And if, you know, if we can't find a way to make the poured-in-place work, we'll, we'll bring it back to the Board.
Okay.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh, hi.
Great, thank you.
Just a quick question, that's the repairability of this surface. Things happen, right? Is this something that can be repaired if all of a sudden it's damaged, cut through or something like that?
That, usually it's burning or cutting. And you bring the, you bring the installer back and they cut out, depending on if they have to go inch down, two inches, or cut right to the bottom.
Yep.
And you cut it out and rework the subbase if you have to. Rework the, the, the first level of it and then pour it in. The only thing that would be a little different is the color just because of the, the wear.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, it's fine. Is there a significant advantage to providing shading over the, the rubber to make it last longer?
It's going to be hot. It's going to be hot and there's nothing you can do about it. If you did, this is not the sun I had growing up. It's a very different sun. It's going to be hot. If kids are in bare feet, well, then they shouldn't be, but they will be. And everyone will say it's, everything's really hot. Yes, it is. And it, it is the way it is with playground equipment. If you've got kids and you've been out there, you'll see it. It's just going to be that way. Do you need shade there? Absolutely. Especially for people with, with disabilities that the sun is too much for them.
So we, we are working with Jeremiah on a, a landscape plan. He's going to try to find a way to bring in some more mature trees to provide some shading with some plantings. But in terms of a, a canopy over the playground, way out of our budget range.
Yeah.
But, okay.
But we could try to get a couple of shady spots, maybe.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Exciting, thank you.
Yes, indeed.
Okay, we have a presentation of draft mission statements for Transportation Management Committee. You all have a, an updated draft that Mr. Suso provided.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to thank committee member Ed DeWitt for bringing to our attention that I inadvertently had on my draft in the packet, had overlooked one of our committees as being a, designating an ongoing member, that being the Planning Board. So my apologies to the Planning Board. My thanks to Mr. DeWitt. And you have the revised copy with that one single adjustment. Again, it's draft-only, subject to whatever expansion or changes you care to do.
Sam?
Yeah, I, I don't see anything mentioned in here about CCRTA as providing, you know, public transportation in the area. And at least consulting with them on how you integrate whatever we might do locally. So I, that was a, a missing piece in my mind. And it's, I mean, it's.
So maybe, so maybe under that third bullet.
Bullet point easily.
Where it talks about who they're working with. So Department of Public Works, Planning, CCRTA.
Yep.
Good point.
No, I, I mean, I think it's a critical piece of the infrastructure in this town. We need to make sure we integrate our efforts with it and use their capabilities. We've already reached out to them to possibly provide some beach shuttling.
And constantly nag them to expand their service.
Absolutely.
With that addition, I would move that we make this out of draft and into accepted statement.
Second.
Mr. DeWitt, do you want, hold before we vote, did you wanna?
I do. I, I, I have some comments that basically came from your interviews and your previous statements. I, actually, the, that was one of my comments, Mr. Patterson, was that.
Sorry.
There's an absence of. There's an absence of other regional entities that probably should be here as well. Cape Cod Commission and their transportation, Steamship Authority, although you obviously have other representation and whatever, but we should be coordinating with, with them. But there's also no direct mention of accessibility, historical significance, public safety, and the environment, all of which were discussed in, in, in your interviews. And I think those are important aspects. I think from a, from a committee's standpoint, it would be really helpful to have a sort of goal or vision of how you see an integrated transportation system, you know, for the town in terms of, of, of how it, how it works. And the other thing is, and this also came up, is public involvement. And I would think that you would want us to engage the public in discussions of what we're talking about in terms of transportation. So those are my thoughts. The other interesting thing from a town perspective, and this is that chasm between town government and the school department, is your biggest transportation provider within town government is the school department. There's no mention of them.
Well, I would just say, I hope that you guys, you know, when you have your first couple of meetings, you talk about this mission statement, and if there's some adjustments that need to be made, you can come back to us, and we can always adjust it if there's something that we missed.
Sure.
I think sometimes it's helpful with a committee, I know affirmative action just did it this year, where they really thought about, you know, what, how they saw their role to some extent and came back with that, that piece. I mean, obviously, a mission statement is just sort of the broad outline as to sort of what your, your focus is.
For instance, the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee came back and said, you know, we're just, we don't want to just be the bike committee. We want to be involved with pedestrian concerns as well, and we said, okay.
Well, I, I think it's also important that you sort of let us know what is going to be most helpful to you as the Board of Selectmen, because really, what our, our charge is, is to help you do your job, you know, more than, you know, anything else. And I think that that's an important, you know, aspect of it. I mean, we, we don't do anything. We just provide you some thoughts, recommendations, and analysis of.
I'd like to have bus service that's reliable enough that people can use it to get to work every day and get to community college and get home in a timely fashion. Right now, it's kind of difficult to go from Falmouth to the Four Seas. You gotta go to the Cape Cod Mall, take a bus from there, commute and catch another one, and it's a, you can spend a lot of time on the bus just trying to get to and from where you're going.
Sure.
It's just, that's not just a Falmouth issue, but, you know.
Well, but that's, I think that's one of the regional issues, and I think that we need to be sort of, you know, thinking about a lot of regional things.
Absolutely.
The bridge replacement is going to have impact on Falmouth, even though it's obviously a neighboring town.
Right.
Sam?
I think we also need somebody that's kind of looking toward the future and saying, what's, what's, what could we do in twenty years that looks like it's evolving in terms of technology? I mean, right now, they're doing a beta test. CCRTA is doing a beta test in the Barnstable area, using an Uber-like communication system with the Dart buses, so that you can put an order in and have a bus come and pick you up in two hours. But it's much more dynamic than having to, to schedule something twenty-four hours ahead of time. And, you know, if we had a system like that, how could that be integrated in with, you know, what we have? So I, I think we almost need, maybe working with CCRTA and the Cape Cod Commission, a vision of what kind of a transport, public transportation system we might actually offer the citizens of this town.
And I think that that piece is sort of, I mean, that's, I'm just reviewing this draft and, you know, I mean, it's very broad.
Yes.
And so that's the point of it, right? Is that it's very broad. Reviewing, analyzing all aspects of the town's transportation system, identifying transportation issues, coordinating suggested transportation actions, reviewing the transportation master plan, and then all, and then other specific transportation-related requests that may be made from time to time. So I think, my feeling would be with the addition of Cape Cod Commission that I think is missing from this, because they are a real resource that we can collaborate with and should be, because they've done a lot of, they've done a lot of the work already. Is it, is it in here?
It will be. Are you meaning the RTA, or are you meaning the RTA outside of the commission?
CCRTA, oh, Cape Cod Commission.
And the.
Two different organizations.
Yeah, I'm talking about both, because I do think Cape Cod Commission has, I mean, they have folks that are traffic, you know.
Easily added to bullet point three, I think.
Yep.
And no, just a picky point, but there's a, I think it's in bullet five, is it? There's downtown. I think you should mention the villages, because as opposed to the downtown, because I think that they have different, one, two, three, four.
It's number four.
Yeah, four, yeah.
Also says other major transportation sensitive areas.
I think that's where your parking challenges are, and it's not just in the downtown area. It's Woods Hole, it's North Falmouth, it's East Falmouth, and those kinds of things. And I think we tend to be a town that thinks in terms of villages as opposed to other things as well. So those are all, those are my thoughts.
Thank you very much, and thanks for sticking around. So any other thoughts about, I think on that, that, that bullet point, it says in other major transportation-sensitive areas of town, so sort of captures that, that piece of it, but.
I think substituting villages for downtown.
I get, uh-huh. But what, what would you say? But I think the point for the downtown, so you would say what? Solutions to?
Oh, village areas. Just drop downtown and put village in.
Okay.
And I don't know about transportation-sensitive areas, I mean. I would, I would caution you about dropping downtown. I think that's the big mcgilla. I think if you want to add villages, I'd consider that, but I certainly wouldn't delete downtown.
I mean, one of our big things that we really need sort of work on is specifically tackling the challenges of downtown. I mean, it is, it is, it's, you know, it is, it's sort of a separate entity. There are lots of other transportation issues, but we've talked, I mean, how much conversation have we had about potential parking garages and parking space and shuttling? So I think if we, if we say.
How about to downtown and other village areas?
Or downtown and village areas.
Okay. Yep.
Or connecting downtown to the villages.
So downtown and village areas, and other major transpens, transportation-sensitive areas of town, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it covers it.
I think that's fine. Again, it's not, it's not meant to be, it's meant to be sort of a broad charge that the committee gets to run with, so.
I wouldn't mind adding environmental concerns and the address such issues such as parking management, truck deliveries, environmental concerns, and putting it on the side.
Great.
I'd like to have our own town trolley that runs year-round to all the villages.
That'd be great.
No circus.
We can find the money right after we find the money for everything else.
It feels so bad for people I see taking taxis to Shaw's for supermarket.
Yes, expensive way to live. So with those additions, did you get the environmental piece of it, Julian?
Yes, environmental concerns, we can, we can add that to the third bullet point.
Okay. So with those changes, do I have a motion? Accept?
I move accept.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Great, thank you. Okay, meetings.
Madam Chair, could I just mention one other thing? To the best of my knowledge, we're still awaiting a designee from the Historical Commission, which is why I have not, unlike with the Citizens Committee where I convened the initial meeting, I've not done that with this group, because we have a final designee to be brought back to you as, as the Board of Selectmen, so you can affirm.
Can we reach out to Historical one more time?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we.
And then just go forward, frankly, if no one's appointed, I think.
We did, there was comments questioning the necessity of having the Historic Commission involved with the Transportation Committee. Maybe we could leave them on there, but move forward without that.
Yeah, that, that's, if we can just ask one more time for them to please designate someone.
We, we have had difficulty getting one of their members, like for the Community Preservation Committee.
Yeah, the same, yeah.
Yeah. The position was essentially vacant for a year. So, yeah, I, I don't know, they have too much on their plates.
Yeah, I don't want to hold up this committee waiting, so if we can ask them.
The Chair is not gonna be at the, at their next meeting, so.
So that delays it as well, yeah.
I would concur, go ahead and have the meeting start with who we have.
And go from there.
Yeah, let them get started and.
Very good.
Okay.
And if it becomes apparent later that the Historic Commission's not gonna be able to bring forth a member, maybe we'll adjust the membership and just knock it down one.
Thank you. Any, anything for the, these very extensive, thank you so much for these minutes. That was a very full meeting.
I have some minutes.
There was a couple.
They're, they're pretty easy to do.
Okay.
Shall I start?
Yes, please.
Okay, page five. The middle paragraph, it starts with a Leo Franton, but BOA, that's, I assume that's Bank of America? Yeah, that's the right place.
Bank of America.
Just turn it, take, get rid of the acronym and use Bank of America. And then on page six, under number four, public comments, the second sentence, I guess it is, it should say, it says Mark Bunker, it should be Mary Bunker?
Right.
Ryther, R-Y-T-H-E-R. Okay? And then the very next paragraph, at the beginning, unidentified woman. Do you remember the name?
Yes, her name is Terry Jewett.
Yes. Thank you, I couldn't come up with her name. Okay, and then on page eight, these are all pretty much typos. Coming up from the bottom would be the fourth paragraph starting, fourth paragraph, excuse me, starting with Mr. Johnson Staub. In the second line, ideal locations based on the software analysis of the last three years of incidents to get to seventy percent. Right now, it's not correct. Of the last three years of incidents to get to seventy percent of calls in a four-minute response time. So the data set was the incidents within the last three years. Right now, it doesn't say that at all. So the substance of that thought is, is not captured there. And then the final one is on page ten. The, under number three, the second paragraph, and then, see, is it? At the end of that first sentence, which is on line three, that's, that should be Planning Board, and Planning Board should be capitalized, since it's an official committee. The Planet, capital P, and it's PLA in it. And that's it.
Okay. Anything else from anyone?
Just on page ten, under number three, Mr. Brown asked if they had thought it through regarding housing projects, maybe improve the process, try to get the Planning Board, even if just the Chair for comment. Add that resource for a nudge before the meeting would be helpful. I thought, I think that that was saying that, you know, trying to encourage the LIP application. I'm not sure what.
Where are you?
At the bottom of the page on ten. Trying to make a little more sense of that. Ask, add that resource for a nudge before the meeting would be helpful.
No, I think, no, what we were talking about is getting a response back from planning because on the Brick Hill project, they felt, so I think what your, your point you were making is trying to at least even if they weren't convening, if we could get any input.
Which I said, even if it's just the Chair for a comment. But then the next sentence just doesn't make sense. Add that resource for a nudge before the meeting. I'm just trying to recall exactly what that comment was, because I don't think that is what it was.
What if you just strike that?
Yeah, okay, because it's confusing.
Because it's confusing, and your, your statement is pretty clear before that.
And after, right.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that okay?
I have one more, sorry. On page eleven, turn it over. Under number four, if you read down there in the fourth line, it starts off, what is allowed in blank aqua is local? That doesn't make any sense to me.
Um, okay, what? Uh, is that the B, Mr. Johnson Staub? What's the difference for, is it, is it what's allowed in the aquifer?
Aquifer, what's allowed?
What was, what is it that forty B trumps? It can't go into the A, but it can go into.
Actually, forty, forty, that's right, forty B cannot.
Go into A, but it can go into.
Zone two, which you clarified that it was not.
It's, it's not a zone two, which is a state designation.
It's a water protection resource.
It's a water protection district which can be superseded.
By forty B.
So, so that exact sentence, I'm, I mean, the closest thing to aqua would be aquifer.
Right.
But that's not the regulatory term of art.
Right.
I think you were talking about the zone, it falls in the water resource, source district, but not marked zone B, C, and A, where Mr. Rafiti, did I review the diagram? What is allowed in?
The water contribution or?
That's the wa, I guess the.
Maybe.
We don't know what we said, John.
Yeah, I would just strike the sentence.
Yeah, I think you're fine.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
I'll, I move approval with those edits and release for public access.
Okay, do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Huge thanks, that was a, that's, that was a lot, so thank you.
Marathon.
Okay, Selectmen reports at eleven, at twenty of eleven.
I know, but I, I have to bring one on.
Okay.
I went to the school committee meeting last Tuesday, and the Recreation Committee brought up a second artificial turf field proposal that I think needs to get on our radar screen. I think it was fairly well-received by the school committee members. It basically was a recommendation that they put an artificial turf field on the field hockey fields up near Old Campus Drive. That was, I think there's, there are two fields in there, but, you know, they brought out the fact that the Gale report showed that we really needed three artificial turf fields in this town if we're gonna be able to support the level of activity that we have on our, all of our fields. And this is their idea of where we could put at least a second artificial turf field in. So I just wanted to report to you that that's in the review process.
It's a little bit of irony that we tried that, I think, six years ago, and the lacrosse team and, and field hockey team came to us very angry that we were gonna do that to that field.
Yes, we had many, many, many people.
It slowed it down, it was slowed down across its three years because of being told that was not a place to do artificial field. Now they've seen it, they like it.
Exactly. It's a, it's a new day, you know? Little history makes a lot of difference. And then, and, and that, that's it. I, I think that Doug was there, Julian too, the, the Fire Station Advisory Committee meeting, their kickoff meeting went very well, and nice to see Mike Duffany and Trish Booley step up and be the co-chairs of that committee.
Great, that's wonderful.
That's it.
Well, I had a busy week, but I'll make it real quick.
Perfect.
Coastal Resilience Action Committee is considering prohibiting building or rebuilding in the Velocity Zone, which is forward-thinking. Waterways Committee reported that the dredging of Falmouth Harbor was only halfway completed because the dredge broke down. Marks Building Committee is still meeting every couple of weeks and working towards their plan for the outdoors, of the, the recommendation for the outdoors. This Fire Station Committee was, I attended with Mr. Patterson. Water Quality Management Committee, the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan was accepted by the state with no significant revisions, so that's a good one. I attended a, a small meeting of people to discuss Mill Pond Way, including Brian Dudley and Heather, and Amber Unruh, who did the study of that bond, suggesting remediation. And one thing that she had recommended, and Mr. Dudley still recommends, is that the plan for the tailwater recovery pond in Mr. Handy's side of the berm in that bog still should be constructed. So Jen McKay attended the meeting to give us technical advice, and she said, you know, if Water Quality Management wants to do the proposal for the tailwater recovery pond and present it to CONCOM, she said that seems certainly like it could be something that might work. She can't speak for the commission, but she did recommend that we go ahead and apply. Went to the composting meeting on Wednesday at the Recreation Center with Mr. Fennerin and others from Solid Waste Advisory, and it was very interesting to hear people's take on it. I was very interested in it, I'd like to see if we can move forward to try to get that food waste out of the waste stream, just in the beginning stages, and a lot of work to do, but it's an interesting idea.
It's hugely, we, we, my husband is pretty obsessive about composting, and the amount of garbage that we throw away is, for a family of four with two kids, it just, I mean, it's like I have to remember when I've taken the trash out, because we have so much less trash, so it makes a really big difference.
In a lot of ways, we've reg- In a lot of ways, we've regressed over the years. I remember when I was a kid, I'd go to Providence and visit my grandparents and he'd smack me if I threw food in the trash. He'd say, that goes in the garbage pail, what's the matter with you? And we didn't do that here. But in the cities, they were doing it way back when.
We had pigs, so that's how you get rid of all of your, pigs eat every single thing that you have and it saves you money and it makes them nice and healthy because they're eating real food. So maybe you can give a pig to every resident in the town.
That's a good idea.
Different attitude when you're a farmer, even a gentleman farmer.
Just to, you know, on Mr. Brown's comment, once again, maybe we need to get our own dredge. Maybe we should put that into a long-term budget project. I know they're expensive, but we could use it and we could, I'm sure, rent it out to other municipalities who needed it.
But these important projects are really just not.
Part of this Mill Pond discussion has brought up the discussion about various machinery that could be used to both remove weeds from Mill Pond and possibly other ponds in town. There's people at Cedar Lake out there in North Falmouth that are very concerned with the over-vegetation of their pond. And I suspect it's a problem in a lot of ponds, because if I, as I look around, I see a lot more lily pads and things growing. I think we're, our Falmouth Water stewards group is start, starting to look at freshwater ponds now, because I think we're going to find out pretty quickly that they're having problems too. Overloaded with nutrients and so forth. So one of the things that we were looking at, and I got a brochure on it, is a multi-faceted machine which can do cutting, excavating, and dredging. It's got a little small dredge. Not like the big dredge that the county has, but maybe for these smaller waterways. And Chuck Martenson was there and he was very interested in researching it, but.
It's better than a broken one, too.
A little expensive.
I mean.
Yeah, it's easier to fix, right? But that's another, another conversation for down the road, but we're looking into it. Could be.
When's, when's the cutoff date when we have to stop dredging? Or winter flounder?
I think we have to wait till January 15th.
Yeah.
And that's what's difficult. We can do it in the fall, but we don't know what we're going to get in the winter storms.
Right.
Could be a waste of money.
It's a lot of work for not a lot, yeah.
The more we've been getting them.
Tried attending the second Steamship Authority parking meeting. We still don't have a quorum because no one's been appointed from the vineyard either to the parking or to the task force. I know that there's.
Steamships going there saying, give us members, but.
Same with our committee, still no activity. I wonder if that's a strategy.
Mr. Suso?
Just a reminder again, we touched on this, the, we'll be convening the Board of Selectmen along with the Finance Committee tomorrow at 7 o'clock at the Herman Room. And the topics on the Finance Committee's agenda are the FY '21 Fire Department budget as well as the Selectmen's proposed override to fund eight additional firefighters. So that is tomorrow, the agenda has been, notice of meeting has been posted with the board, but not specific business to transact, of course, but presuming that we'll probably have a quorum there.
Right, and this is just a reminder, it, it's FinCom's meeting, so really they'll be directing the meeting and running it and we'll be providing any answers, but we don't anticipate voting on anything ourselves. It'll obviously be, you know, FinCom's show, so.
Don't be overbearing, right?
Yeah. As overbearing as we usually are. Anything else?
Thank you.
No, okay. So a motion to adjourn?
We adjourned.
So, so, aye, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you.